Please.
Um, Mr.
Here.
Here. Here, okay. Uh, Chris Globsir, why would you like us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the.
And. Thank you. We have a couple of items of new business to discuss and then after that. We'll go into um. Old business. Let me.
To include the minutes or to get a vested resources for twenty twenty. Um, I didn't, it was on the agenda for last, I mean, separate twenty eight meeting, and I didn't have it completed, but now it is completed.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Calley.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Williams.
I just. The request motion, the oral process, proceed with the internal posting and positioning of the community development plan. Um, and we propose that we have today, the position by the committee of trustee.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Anything further, Mr. Williams, from your side of things?
I just wanted to ride. Um, just hearing, uh, my colleagues at the county township today.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm on this topic, I'm sorry.
We haven't voted yet.
On this, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything, yeah, sorry, we didn't vote.
You confuse me if you run ahead. For the record, we.
Anything further on this topic? Okay.
All right.
I know, okay, good, Debbie.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Williams, I thought we were, yeah.
I. Um, so again, we're repeating our colleagues, the county township contacts, they gave two potential dates for joining the. Um, their recommended date is February eighth, that's September eight. And then an alternate day, February sixth, that's September eight. So if the board has calendars or has a, a player who on that, not to pass that back.
But. I know, I know you asked us about that last time and I was like, sure, let's do it. And now I forget, what is it about?
The million properties. Disposition.
I got you, and what are the dates proposed again?
Yeah.
Uh, one would be February eighth, and I'm sorry, room nine. But that would be the day after her, um, February, or maybe, if it were six, would be the second.
Now, what, what time again?
Six.
Six thirty.
Where would this be? Well, did they propose? I'd suggest we have here, we'd be glad to host them. Uh, either night is fine with me.
Uh, I'm good with either night, Katie. Alan, do you have a preference?
Yeah, I think the sixth will work.
Okay. What time again? Six thirty?
Six thirties.
That's six.
Six thirty to nine?
No, no, she was asking the sixth or the ninth.
Oh, okay, six, the sixth, the sixth.
Six thirty to ten thirty.
Hopefully, six thirty, maybe seven fifteen. Um, so the sixth, everybody in agreement with the sixth, the six thirty? At um. Uh, at art in our hall. If, if they're willing. Okay. Okay. Any other new business? Okay, so from here we can go on to old business and then. Um, this could be the topic of discussing potential updates to our employee personnel policies and our, our procedures. We probably could have that discussion. On the floor, a little bit more congenial, I think, so. Um, if anybody's, uh, if everybody's okay with that, we'll just move down.
We don't have to sit crisscross applesauce, do we?
We could.
Oh, you mean on a there, not on the floor.
Not all the way down.
No, sorry.
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Okay. There's no way I could do that. You have to get me up with a Hoyer list.
Mr. Turner, I asked our consultant, uh, Mr. Woodwork to be honest.
Sure. Welcome.
What?
I didn't say Happy New Year, Happy New Year to everyone, I'm sorry, I didn't say that in the beginning.
Their. Exactly. They have. This will be your number. Quick mutation, it's a lot of. But then.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah. Come on, it's a band, there was a few more. And then without any success. Yeah. Did everybody want to hear it? Uh, we'll be in, uh, with Peter represented, part of.
Why?
Yeah.
I think you don't want to cry, and I represent it as much as you can have. There one. Thank you. There.
Okay. So this is basically a very discussion from our group of, um, one division nine. And we agreed with that, our department has come to give us, as far as, and provide some perspectives intended for a robust discussion. On some of the proposed recommendations of the change.
Age changes. So, um, Tim, you wanna, um. Mr. Williams, you want to start us off, I have everything that we should proceed.
Uh, well, it's obviously a continuation, a further continuation of our sessions that kind of with this, um. And I think there's law, there's, I'm trying to get this updated, that started several years ago. And we had a really decision, a lot of other things that coincided down, but. I'm sure it's been four, five minutes, or two, three years now.
Oh. About that. Maybe closer over here, I think it started off, so.
Well, sure, I know that it made it worse for a lot, maybe.
Yeah.
We, uh, that's a good one, uh, process that came to. I contracted with, uh, Flumins Nelson, who represents, and, uh. To try to go through our existing policies and make sure that they're properly updated, from. Um, laws and statutes that were placed, um, and then also that could be anything else that was necessary. You know, I came aboard, obviously, in July, and, um, sort of got, we were at work on that, and I'm. And so. Actually, my, my post meeting board was actually hired here, um, where I hosted a work session with department heads here, which was. We're gonna go over those policies, that's personalized, and, uh. Um, one of the things that, if we'll call back in early September, I would ask the board if we could have a employee committee sort of work on as well as the department is. Um, and provide, well, items that I liked that should be at least considered by the board. And next prepared, now, A department was the chair of that, he. He prepared at the end of their work, um, and not a summary of the work that was in the records that gets from that. Uh, I attempted to then take that whole pages and turn it into sort of bullet points, uh, summarizing the things that, uh, that they had recommended, as well as. Uh, some of the chief life, when we came out with, uh, actually the chief law firms, they're going through it as well, they have a lot of clean, like, practical things, and. Um, we made three of those, Ryan, I just included, we took care of those and got into it, um, I think there were just maybe two items that appear policy. So, what we tried to do is just to explain everything down to where was policy issues that beyond the capacity of appointing a visual to be able to make those kind of decisions. As I think where we're at tonight is, uh, certainly we can go through page by page of this if you would like, and, but, you know, it seems like that there are some things that are policy related that. The employee committee would like you all to consider, and, um, the company as well, certainly they're here to provide, but. One thing that I will note is that there were a couple of, uh, tweaks that I made to this, I mean, I said that to you, you know, I got the. This is partly the other day, and, uh, just making sure that what I understood from your report, who was probably was putting you. For the most part, I didn't perceive that it was, but there were a couple of lines that I understood what the thrust of the employee committee was, and the one that's most notable is. It relates to what's classified as full time, we didn't talk about that last meeting. Um, my understanding was that there was maybe a, a desire to have full time less than thirty hours, when it was opposed to forty, which is currently the plan. Um, and I had the thought that they had a little bit more about that. All the employee committee was really saying is that our rest, by classified as thirty, or is there any other agencies that classify it less than forty? Are we legally in a good position, um, in our command by sending it forty hours? And so that was probably the most notable item on there, um, that, that I just, I, I missed, you know, it's. Maybe I never, we went over again, just a small few, one of these. Do you college, was it the? And I only set a couple of items, I think one of them was, was it the? Promotion or warrants and promoting, or whether.
Short notice and the best included in the definition, it says it's altered.
Sorry. Uh, yes, well, we, I, I think that in the, in the plan, we tried to pick out what your point is suggested, and then. Do you need to have a long period of notice for just a few days? And so we've tried, that's a period of, if I'm not correct in that, um. But if it's a week, then you still need to have the, the, I think, two or three weeks, uh. I don't know what it is here, so if you want to. Further, yeah, make that so, if you have to have less than a season for a week off, then certainly we'd make that completely, but, so. That was, that was one of the, we made this, in the corporate.
I think the longevity, the longevity system was another part where. Uh, what the committee had intended to convey was. Uh, there is a system, not necessarily that can mimic during that effect, but. Perhaps, uh, there's a rate of assistance of, and once you reach different benchmarks, there might be a Christmas bonus, or there might be a match for forty seventy. Or something to that effect, a different, a different regular kind of anticipated injury. That to kind of boost morale and, uh, have, have a general system in place that maybe could be conducive for.
As opposed to a myriad of new contracts, which is, I guess, I personally, in my look at that, you just made it looking at that, and that we. We here product, and, um, contractual benefits, because.
Yeah, longevity, I mean. That's something they bargain for and they can change and then everything, so I can go back and change this every time, or two of the bargaining, some, two different ones. Or what, longevity is not a bad thing in itself, if it's something that. Took us on the dock, I kinda, I also think not necessarily awesome when you become part of a compensation plan that you guys have, a kind of a philosophy of. It's something I'll committed to do, just like that, because you never know how the funds are going to be or whatever, or you actually tie it to your service. It's a great idea, because it's a financial thing, not gonna put it here yet, bring that to you guys if you want. Put it here, but I, I promise, if you get top somehow, for. Compensation plans, it's more tied to compensation than this, that types of policies, but.
You mean, so you want to suggest, you're suggesting that we formalize. Uh, a consistent policy for the provision of bonuses or, um.
Yeah, they're like, bonuses are like the longevity, if it's something, like, if we have a compensation plan, where we, you know, the trustees will look at things and we make a determination, all employees. Not in bargaining unit, get an X amount based on merit, based on coal, based on any kind of factors, and we may also consider. Um, longevity, or maybe something like this, you know, and, and, which is kind of outline it, and follow it there.
Kind of, are you sure it's gonna amount or percentage or?
That can be, anyway, first, I think the idea is, is that something the justices would like to see of something adopted, and then, yeah, then we can go back, okay. Cause that's the longevity, like, just all over the board, if you look at your peers, it's such as, you want one, okay, then you can send along, it's a five, fifteen, no.
So I think this does stop, and the idea that we have some consistency in a policy that reviews job positions. And what goes into certain jobs, and then, um, I think we're thinking about three to five year evaluation for the. Possibly you guys are, are, are jobs, and because we're growing, and because the data pertains so much, and we've seen this many times now, over the last few years, where. An employee is doing a few things, and then all of a sudden, a few more, a few more, but the compensation is not catching up, so having a way to kind of come in and reevaluate those jobs and, and really. I guess almost redefine the job description as it sits in that moment, and then, um, talk about compensation for that job. So that, to me, that would link more to the idea, and maybe longevity is just a term that's used, but not so much the primary, you're gonna be here with the merit. With the base that you mentioned, uh, I think you tie it above that, but it almost not, it could exist on, I mean, you can't have a merit. Um, based, any kind of. Increase in pay for a policy and not have a good, um, structure and, and process in place to value your merit. So you can't handle that.
Yeah. I, I, I agree, and I think it has, there has to be some merit basis, it can be across the board. You know, because there will be certain employees that most, I would say, it was deserved based on their merit, but some that will not, you know, and I think there should be a distinction there.
Um, and so that's why, uh, it's a great idea, but it's something, I think, uh, justices can look at, and then if you want to adopt it, and help the board, and, and probably even separate them. Personal policy manual, kind of with, it's a, this is the township's compensation plan, philosophy. Going forward, every year, as we look at, you know, performance evaluations and use that to help, and we use this, and the, all those different. You can go, many things we want are very strict of, uh. Eligible type of extras, other than just face compensation.
It's kind of hard at this point, this is new, you know, for us, but it's kind of hard to, um. Come up with a, a rule, if you will, at this point, you know.
And, uh, I think when I, when Tim and I brought it, and I was like, oh, that's something, you know, I, I don't think you can exactly draft something and say, at first, it's like, it was something. Wouldn't even entertain, because it's a financial identification, so it's like, yes, that's something we want to see, and I'm glad to help out, or. You know, listen, if someone else can keep on working on something that for you, uh, if it was something you wanted, um.
I, I would like to entertain, I think it is a good idea, you know, we do it in my practice for my employees, but it's merit based, it's Christmas time. And it also varies based on how successful the practice was in, in the, in the, in the year, you know, how, how much can we afford it, and how much can, how much can you afford, if we can afford it? So, you know, I will, I would, I don't, you know, I would propose that we establish something, um. Preliminary, looking for some, or a recommendation on something very basic, but still, again, based on some measurement, merit has to be included, in my opinion.
And if I can add, it's, it's just an interesting time where a lot of public employers, who see, just haven't entertained those things before. Um, outside of the department, they're in the units, um. In the last two years, it's really what COVID did, of everyone went home, stopped working, people aren't coming back, and. Across the board, it is hard to retract people, you are starting to see the trend, and more public employers are starting to adopt those type of private practices. Of changing their compensation philosophies. To get people back here so they can also compete with everyone else that is short-staffed, so it's not uncommon to, you've never thought about it until right now.
But I get confused, if we're gonna do longevity, I guess, we put in the contract sense. It's, you know, it's a perfect lease apartment.
It's based on, uh, ten, fifteen, and twenty, five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred.
Right, permanent, permanent. Right, right, so, so if we walk down this path, uh. Uh, longevity, we can't tie it to merit. It is, it is a bonus for being.
I think we're mixing up the terms a little bit, there's some discussion here, I mean, there's longevity pay, which is like, like you need contracts, which is, you know, given at the end of certain terms of service, and then there are merit. Given at the end of certain terms of service, and then there are merit bonuses, which we're kind of talking about. Now we can have longevity consideration as opposed to a merit bonus, but I don't think we want to start writing a policy that minimizes the union contract in respect to longevity pay. And, and we're, we're kind of talking about some other things, but longevity pay is almost like a term of art and we're kind of using it a little differently.
Yeah, I agree, I don't know that we want anything structured like that, you know, I think this should be something, I don't want to say loose, but, you know, I can't think of a better word, but something that. Number one, will be based on merit, not necessarily longevity, you know, we may have the seller of twelve eight, it's only been with us for a year and a half. But they are banging it out, doing a great job and they should be recognized, you know, even though they've only been here, like I said, a short period of time, as opposed to somebody who may have been here ten years. You know, worth of time and maybe is just kind of dragging on anybody else's coattails. So, um, I, I agree, I don't think we want to mix anything longevity wise. But I, I would propose it if we decide to do this, to, to time it with Thanksgiving and for Christmas, which is when a lot of folks, you know, incur higher expenses with. You know, gift giving and whatnot, and heating bills are higher and et cetera, et cetera.
So we do performance evaluations at the end of the year based on, so they're doing, um. At the end of January, based on the previous year's performance. Uh, I see what you're saying, but I would almost suggest that it'd be based on performance evaluations if there are, um. Bonuses based on, so it should be tied to that.
You mean earlier in the, shortly after the performance evaluation?
Correct.
Okay.
So, sorry. Cheek is, like sometime thereafter.
Yeah, sometime after.
But you don't have time to process and.
Yeah, we should all be on the same timeframe for performance evaluations to be completed. And then if there is a decision by the trustees to pay, uh, bonuses based on merit. It can be, you know, based on those performance evaluations.
So I think the other thing too, that maybe, this is pointless to offer, but then, like, please, if they don't affiliate. We have three different types of employees. We've got contract for private, contract for police, and then we have people who are not in union at all. And where they get paid is different. You guys have a, kind of a levy, you guys have a levy, you guys are out of the inside village. And that's where our general fund is arrived. And that general fund, because of this nature of being inside, it's not enough. And so we have to be mindful of that, as, as you think about these discussions. I won't sound cheap, but I do think that we have to be mindful of, of how those silos funds dispersed across the township. And I don't think it's a good thing for us to try to compare. One type of employee against another type of employee against the third type of employee. So maybe that's something that we, I got torn to pieces one time. Because I was suggesting that we have instead of one tranche of, of raises, we kind of have two. So that way with the merit, there is this for a secondary one, you know. But people yelled at me about that.
That was the people sitting in the chair.
Yeah, you were there that day, um. And so that might be something that we think about, but I think as far as, as far as this compensation, perhaps we pull that out of this discussion. And just to start to have that as kind of a separate structure discussion. Moving forward, I'll start that policy, but we can always put it back in, but make the commitment. That we're going to sit down and work through that a little bit more tied together with some, I think, additional work that you guys might do with regard to. Pay, pretty sound, so they are, this big guy, hold on, it's there. Um, I know you're chomping at the bit everything, and I talk a lot, and it's not fair, I talk too much, um. But, you know, we have, it, it, there are several, um. Positions here, and we've discussed this, they're very similar, they're very, you know. Their load, their workload is pretty similar, but yet we're all over the board with them. And so I think we need more science at, at the front of them. We need to learn how to walk before we learn how to run. And so I'd like to see if we can take that, take this entire special compensation, pull it out and have a deeper dive on it at a point, and I'll shut up.
And conceptually, John, I'm sorry, and conceptually, I think, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not much of a talker, but I'm trying to agree. Uh, so I, I think I used the term loose earlier, but, you know, so maybe the first, if we agree to do this the first time around, we, it's a little bit looser. It's a trial, it's an experiment, you know, but, you know, I do think it's a, a nice tool. To keeping, in conjunction, perhaps some other things you're gonna talk about, uh, keeping and recruiting your employees. And I think the taxpayers, hearing us talk about spending more money, you know, what the taxpayers have to understand is that we are, they, they desire a certain level of. Service from the township and in exchange for a premium level of service, which we intend to deliver. There's a cost associated with that, so we either want it or we don't, I think we want it for the most part. And if we want it, we have to pay for it. And one of the fundamental ways we provide excellent premier service is by having good, uh, long-term employees who are committed to their work with, um. For the, on behalf of the citizens of our township. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
John's just waiting.
I know, that's all I was gonna say.
No, no problem.
My thing about like the merit base. Like I, I just implemented the, the pay scale for my apartment for the first five years. So if you're going to start going merit based within those five years, that's gonna throw that pay scale out the window. Um, so it's, I'm just trying to figure out how that is going to, to work, because if. Cuz it's like set in stone, this is what it is, and if you give them another raise, then. If they get a merit, and then when they get to their next year, their, that raise, they're not gonna get a raise because they already got it. And if, so, cuz they can't exceed that.
But John, you're kind of at a bonus, like a hometown bonus, or at least that was.
Okay, alright, yeah, those, those, those guarantees you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just final confusion upon that, is John, if you guys are the same, same then of your, you know, five year or ten year, whatever your guys did.
Longevity.
But then, well, I'm not talking about the longevity part, but as far as your pay scale, what somebody can pay in the first year, the rear year.
Yeah.
Second year.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a, um, a raise, it would be a.
Yeah, I think, I think we start to hone in on some of that, it's more time, but I, I, I agree with the merit thing, uh. And that's an interesting concept, and maybe we do that, so it would take more work under a, a value, to make sure it's there, so let's leave this on. Why, because one thing, but the, the thing is, though, that we have to walk before we run, like Alex suggests, and we have to, uh, put a good consistent way. And I think that's part of another, maybe you might do policy, creating consistent, frequent, I mean, not frequent, you know, plan. Reviews so that we are used fairly consistently, and then we can kind of think about merit, but if you're gonna do merit. Merit and die tire real fast, if it starts to be perceived as unfair. So if you don't want a good process for, you know, annihilating employees and start running merit base, hey, it's gonna blow up our.
And if we have those evaluations of record and you give the employees that feedback, they'll know.
Well, one thing my wife and I are six age holders, and one thing that they do is, is they take, but they'll give the department a, a long money. And then it's their call, you know, based on their evaluations, they break that one, they'll let them get one percent of that money, two percent of that money, three percent of that. Whatever, and it's based on, that's how it's based on, what they get out of that, you know, for a part of.
Yeah, that's all, that's all the policy that we can put in place, but we just don't have right now. And I don't think it'd be fair for us to say, well, John does it this way. Um, and so you, you guys do it one way, you guys do it another way, let's just follow this together and like, if this. We have a policy that's in place, then, then we're not subjected. We're, we're giving everybody the same break, you know, it's the same question, it's the same analysis, the same. And so as much as, as a manager, as a department head, then you're sitting down, going, hey, go ahead and say, oh, this is where you're. Where you, you're coming out short, this is where you're selling. And so I think that's, I think that changed a little better way to go, when you know what you're up against, than sitting and thinking, you know, you just gotta have. You know, and what is the trust needed, I'm like, you know, and I've heard that, it's sad, I've heard that. I've heard, you know, around the block. He's a very one, he's getting it wrong like that.
So conceptually, in the, in the. Um, you know, I'm sorry, but, so it's such an interesting time, um. It sounds like we're monthly committing to, you know, looking at a bonus system of some sort, but not even work out in case, particularly about tonight. So, um, if we're.
I think bonus standing here, and then both ads.
Bonus, they, merit.
Both bonuses and merit, I think they're two different, two different silos. You're talking about bonus or longevity?
No. Bonus based on that.
Bonus, you know, it's all part of your compensation philosophy plan, which would be part of a different type of policy and not. One year, but it's just something that's come up through all these discussions, like.
But part of it is, um, we just kind of shift gears and go down with it, but I can say, I think it's a safe, I keep moving. But are we gonna make something, uh, we got something in this policy, ready to, for non-union employees, as far as you. Like a product, but there are, there are some evaluations, language in there already, and then it's a manual that is. Um, and one of the things that I thought about last week is, we're trying to screw down that process that. We started with the job stretches, and we make it clear that we look at all those again, and we have to try to get to the all, and. And we have standard for them, and hopefully around, you know, we should have heard their consistency. Um, you know, other than specific job, they need to be consistent across the board, and it can be a bit sad in that direction. And then that job stretch is the basis for that you do your one side, if you think you're, um, if you exactly what the job we saw, are they going well or not?
Yeah, I see, it's already in here, but I did add a line this week at Tim's request, exactly what you're talking about, I added. The board may adopt a compensation plan in an effort to provide a fair and equitable compensation for all employees. Changing market conditions may dictate that the compensation plan be reviewed at least every five years. In order for the township to remain in competitive posture in comfortable in nearby jurisdictions.
And I see what you're saying, I, I understand, so yes, we are, we have to establish a way by which we're going to measure, you know, merit. I was just strictly speaking to the concept of establishing the concept of a bonus based on merit, yes, we do have to, absolutely. Have to establish that process, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just something I was saying, just to jump in.
I just think that as a looking at employee things and, and I like any of them, but if you guys look at your budgets lately. What you're spending each year in salaries and purchasing the big items and, and. And that, I hate this work, you guys, I hate this work, that's exciting, you're spending more than what you're bringing in. And I hate that work, I hate it, they don't got into it, but I hate this work.
More on side.
But you're spending more than what you're bringing in and.
Well, just break it out here, but, but this is kind of dangerous.
They would be looking at your number, if you look at what.
But that's, that's the discussion that I brought up a minute ago, which was with regards to silos and, and where it comes from.
Right.
And so that is.
That means.
Exactly, I brought that up a minute ago, so that's exactly what we have in mind.
But that is when.
Well, what we're looking at is, is setting up a policy, and that policy, I would have to have that, you know, a, a report. That this year we can't do it. We gotta, we gotta be that consideration, because unlike businesses, life businesses. If you don't have it until, you shouldn't give that most, or consider it, consider it.
Right.
So, and, and, but unlike business, we can't bury our, our rates in order to cover this cost, we're stuck. And so that, that line ends, that's, that's standing in the front, uh, perhaps, and we're doing the whole approach. But, you know, we are limited by what the taxpayers are willing to give us, and you have to.
Yeah, I, I understand, and, and, and I do, this is why Mr. Lewis were, uh, and the understanding of what are those coming up? When they expire, et cetera, so those are gonna have to be.
So, but, but I, I'll. First and foremost, we're, that's all okay, because we're, I think it's kind of only there in fact, because we know that consistency is in order to value it before assessing that, so that's kind of okay. Your debt is signing on and it is all taken, we will start that signing, if we don't have a good plan, build some levies. And at some point, and I'm not talking about this year or next year, I'm just talking about as, because the, the way levels of. Designs and their pack, and we have to give more residents, and we're with the township, we don't get necessarily any more money for food, string, or money to buy, or any money to purchase. And we've seen that hyper-accelerated with the addition of Amelia, and it's not, you know, it's great, right, and it's a lot of those folks. Uh, you know, I think we provide great service, and I, I hope they are happy with it, at the same time, it does cost money. And so we, we do need to think about, we do need to strategically think about, I don't mean that I talk too much off the path here, but. Strategically think about the fact that those levies are capped, and we will have to go back as it is the nature of townships.
Exactly.
At some point, with more money, less, we start that spending, which is not a good thing. Well, that's, we, we know that at the moment, we, we doubt the police, like, we've got a fire, right? Most of those have a sunset, you know, I know that the loving language you say, the higher, also permanent, but it's. Eventually, we break that, that seal, so those are definitely things we need to, to discuss and, and put those on, on the ballot, and I think we discussed, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but yeah, I mean, we always have to be mindful of the dollars, but we also have to have a policy in place.
I know.
Well.
You know, it's just like, you know, they're hiring a lot of weed and, you know, and the benefits and everything that goes along with that, I mean. Well, cotton doesn't are payable, and, you know, and you can see every month, we've been on payable. You know, four, five thousand dollars a month, a lot of payable, and that's, I don't want the money, and we're not needing. And we're hiding.
There's certain bad levels, and that probably will be sooner or later, if we need to, those two.
So can you access the logic of this shift, and the trustees are being blamed, and the administrators are working on a life edition? Which will have air and buzz. Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think I agree with most of that, I, but, you know, what I don't wanna do. Is I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep this standing on for too far, but I think it's the important part of what we're session is, to get that. Off not so right, because we're not thinking about. I don't think, we can't too far without a plan on one of the, and for levies, and then in certain areas, and, and personally, we probably grab this, and we stick with the hand. And, you know, we have a lot of conservatives in town that don't want higher taxes, and I understand that, but. We also have to provide a certain level, certain police and fire and things like that, and some of them can do a little bit of your come on for. For some way, and, and I just, I would like to start that discussion for, because you want, we're all levies at once. Um, and so just kind of a long-term comprehensive plan, and I think we benefit the residents, uh, and the law, and, you know. And I, I, I could easily think of that, but I, I just think, yeah, and some kind of idea, I'm not really a voter, so these levies. Possible, but I'm not, I'm not talking about only with all these purposes in three years, I mean, I'm talking about a ten year, fifteen year, I think that's. But similarly, we play with new process, and have consistency, uh, plan, uh, it's kind of, uh, it is, I, I, that discussion, I think, is viable. I, I would also remind, that I have been drawing for a long time, for an analysis. Of the level of surplus in each of those channels, and when that magic number is, when we go out, and we haven't seen that yet. So that's important to me, as you know, I spend a lot of time, but, and since we were talking about how these things are working, they're not working. So, you know, kind of ticks with me a little bit, but I haven't seen that analysis for many years. And I need to see it, because that's gonna tell me when we pull trigger on. And I need to see it because that's going to tell me when we pull trigger on a renewal. It's a bad story. Hasn't happened, passed out.
That's something we probably, um, Mr. Williams, I think you can move that. Closer to the top of some of the working on, but I do think it's important that I do think that, you know, no, but tax hurdles, they hurt us. But sooner rather than later, I'm going to have to rest that.
I actually, most of the, the residents of your country said terribly, I mean, if, if you're not asking for, you know, more, we're, we're. Police or fire, then they generally bet there. And we guys, again, I don't think that this, do you need an increase? Do we need, you know, a renewal with, you know, no history? If you ask me to look at a budget, my last season circle out in that, I don't, I can't project that. I need someone to do that for me and tell me. You know, it's also like a magic date is twenty twenty four, May, three o'clock. And you, I don't think in a part of that's probably figured that out. Um, but maybe not, I don't know about the season, but I would, I would almost be in favor of, of a motion some sort. The direct apartment has to come up with there, with some of mine or time. But I feel like we guys is very confident part of that's here. Uh, to give us an idea and the weather, it's, and I'm already. But well acquainted with the policy and let us know when they're what they're taking, this is what they can't watch. What do you think? I think that they already said, we talked about the cat waters and the sub new tests and is what they want to say. That's not what I'm looking for, I'm looking for. Rather than, rather than wow, so they're having a different. Very hard to live forever now expenses.
Yeah.
But they're not in front of great. You're not super, they're, they're, they're expenses for this year, just inspection area. But that area too, because I don't, I don't order under. Set a term like you're, well, what else? And I mean, that could be very, very. What are my base costs? What am I, is how would they intercheck this to go? Because I know that my fire, my fire contract is a previous to the actual. Because I'm paying the previous and more for each and for over that period of time. When do these two ones, the expenses and the revenue, what, what day are those two costs? So they really, uh, this will obviously start from the revenue side as to what they're taking.
Yes, and that was spreadsheets that you all, this, that your capital budget, proposed capital budget for the next few years. Though pretty random, in my opinion, you know, I mean, they fill a pretty, uh, they're a tough story. You know, we need all the signs of someone who needs to cause the fire. Fire and spark equipment and, you know, those are pretty huge expenses and I think they're all necessary. So can you all come up with a projection on the lines of what Mr. Freeman is requesting? Based on, since you know your budget's the best, you've already outlined some of your capital requests.
And then back out, like, what did we say, ninety six months? Because we want to make sure that just because, you know, you may have a four million or five million dollar surplus. How much are you burning each year and. If we go out and we do the thing. Then we, you know, we have to be able to have enough money to there through if it passes. And so a running strategy coming in.
You want to say something?
Yeah.
You seen Mr. Perkins, I was wondering, is that one or leaving one?
Um. I'm not an accountant and I'm not a. Uh, I, I, I need, I need.
It's not what we did for the race level.
I, I need to see the, I mean, perhaps it would be lovely. Because I'm just. I'm just a simple guy.
But I want to know if you can get past, we will get that and see if that's what you.
Yeah. And that's what we also need in order to be able to address the long-term trajectory of our budget. Now, we also know that, that the, um, that the inside knowledge. It doesn't need, uh, not very much, but we need to adapt to that too. You know, what, what are we, there is a right one. And that's what we try to, we need to learn to. To be able to make those decisions, kind of like we're consuming. You know, looking at just general language. And so I think we need some backers to die so that we can make the bomb. Yes, if you guys, if possibly the department has lost our, but and, and you can give us a very obvious break. Center where your revenue, uh, drops or relaxes and your expenses continue to grow and things, et cetera. So they're going to be up or distracted with their expenses. Uh, expenditures and sorry. Uh, and your, and your revenues, revenues. Uh, it's, it's coming down or staying flat and at some point that, I'm assuming, that a projection, when we think, of course, it's not completely out of it. But a, a projection, when we think that line, like each department, each side. We're lacking as a, as a, uh, the mind very respective. Uh, we talk about us, kind of cleaning it out for when, you know, what you should think about possibly with these letters. If you need, that's something.
Maybe you can come up, come up with your observations on that, with that, hear your thoughts on that. You might want to suggest we find that.
Well, the big unknown here is. You know. What happens with the projection of a new facility, you know? How does that come into play?
Don't know yet. I guess maybe we need to start with. Yeah, right. We need to start with this.
That's, I mean, that's really tremendous for us because it's not just a facility. You know, we go to third station, the station with the utilities. It's more apparatus, more personnel, like that number goes floating here, don't it?
So that's a parallel line, could you ever react like, oh, it was that or the second. Number evaluation. Yes, that's how, unless we, this, these items start with our views. We can sit with this one.
And that is going to be a moving, so we went a little bit tangential before we're talking about everything we've done about Jermaine. But we're looking at perhaps bolster benefits and improve, you know, employee retention and satisfaction. And so it's all was important, but, um, you know, I think we're probably going to back to this, uh, agenda.
We just want to, there, there's a line here, we just want to walk, and we can just, yes, 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 no, yes, no. And I think probably I'm too, too, or looking all in one together, especially if you have, which is. Probably if the, I think, the license, it's, I think, with the township, that they could work on this. And I think that payback system as well as the, the merit system for the bonus system, those other types of things. Uh, because that can really, I think, if there aren't any of those three items, so. I didn't say that. Can we make some, can we put a motion possibly on the next agenda to the right, send it to the left there? Or we, we didn't do that anything, but we, it's certainly not a mission. Because it sounded like that happens after we, oh, you already got the, the plan. I understand the plan, but can we, can we, can we get that going? Because it's all these other things that hinge upon it. And if you want to do a job and have moved that rocky contract, then it's, I appreciate it. But can we, can we possibly do something that? Sooner than later, or, because there's something other thing that hinges upon this.
Yes, I agree. I wish my memory, isn't that something that was, that we were going to discuss? Was it next? The next.
In, in the whole setting session, which is pretty good for action plan. Um, there's a timeline there for us to, um, bear our, we recite the call. I'm on the committee of the department, that's more interesting. This officer, you know, stand, sort of work it, the proposals and then bring that back to you all. And, hey, that's the way it's. You know, that is, that is actually.
Civil, civil, right, right. And I'm trying to remember with that time frame.
Party team out of March.
March, okay. Okay, so I agree. I think that needs to go on and we can move on with that. And let's say by March. At, at March of four. You know, with that.
And that's, I mean, we will. That is, you read approval recommendation from this committee, um, after interviewing and looking into proposals. Um, for, for the fact I wanted to do it and get started.
And we can do it before, I mean, you know.
I'm okay with that. I just, we covered a lot around that, that plan and I wasn't concerned that it was going to be March, March space. I just want to make sure you reminded, so, you know, we have, we have plans and it's not just a discussion.
The, by March.
Well, I think with, with the, I think, so basically this, but obviously it's, it's slowed it down a couple of weeks anyway. I started on our, even I started the first week of, you know, getting or not getting or hard going with that. But some of the stuff kind of came up and so I had to address that first. Yeah, Danny, as far as that contract is concerned, all that we gave for us.
The contract.
For, for an architect or whatever is utilized. Whatever says.
We'd explain that to me.
We, that's music for years.
Yeah, I wouldn't understand that.
Um, because we are proposing to make improvements. To the facilities, but that, that would have an impact on the residents of Prescott. And so therefore, it would be appropriate for us to utilize Prescott revenue. Give, right, you know, the, the language appropriate. But it's very much like when we use Prescott Tithman to cover a gold match and alone.
Not very good.
For Blackberry, new for coal, specific coal, it's all, it's a bit larger way. But because of the benefit that the third thing is played out, well, you know, the principal people, the residents that. Will specifically have, they'll do such a revenues if they have cost.
What about the loan?
Yeah, okay, we use. And that's it. Because you're discussing. Budgets and, you know, what I think they're early in. Um, I think that's going to be something in your future because that will cost for the, then they can have to, to make response, you know. Assess it.
It would stand to reason that we do that because any facility that we would. Facility or facilities, we were struck clearly with that.
Well, sorry, I need to play that. There's a, there's so many years left on that more to. Uh, how many years left? Recent since, is that clear to that?
Yeah, I think it was usually during the, yes. Yeah, I think, I think your tip, I think it was constructed like five or six or something, so.
So whether you get it in six classes. So that's, you're looking at five or six years out, which is a range of. That's whatever, uh, and always something in the channel. So, but yes, I'm going to, if you want to attach into it now, and it is going to be very approach of this statement. Um, you, you, you want me to use part of, you want me to have it right now? Yeah, no.
A million, yeah.
But if you're outside of five or six years, then spend a percentage of what you want. Pushing the channel on, you don't have to, you don't have to. And then she wants, we're, we're, we're in five or six years out, okay?
Okay, so back to the agenda.
Well, but, 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 so, no, I don't know, I'm not sure if you can just like that.
But one, I agree.
Um, we're only studying about twelve thousand, maybe, on Bradbury. Uh, that's the name on Bradbury.
But all of them, absolutely here.
Nice. Over.
I have, I have before, you know. Yeah.
So.
Is that, I just, um, John, I'm, I'm calling for me, I'm like.
It would, it would, it would, it would, it would grow. Greater than. Than, than thirty thousand. A year, so we, we appreciate this is second, President Ted is coming. So both of those, we can actually use. The higher, we are, and probably do some of these are for, for, for. But I'm sorry, I'm just very, very. Layout of those strategies. So it's to that process, we recruit one day with the next or five, and then obviously certain amount of architecture that will be built. And how, what is the, not just the physical architecture, but must, I mean, for. That we have to go to class to achieve that. And, and, and work with also the daddy's, we, uh, physically are, are actually a project that was, you know, we've got a three month. Some days, or, some days that we didn't say we wanted to, we, we won't do. That they're just an award.
I do have a question for you, relating to that. So tied into the facility here. I mean, depending on the outcome of that or the peril that's with. If we looked at a third station that potentially could be a, we said fire, joint venture off of that, would that be something, or, or more, is that a service matter?
Well, currently no. Because the language on that tip, if I recall, or if you're moving, it's specific. You have to be very, you know, that's the geographic things, you know, right. But if we change the language and then that tip, language and that tip, then we brought it out, but some of that stuff. So that's why you won't have the plus facility. That's another one we're going to discuss. But probably for the session for another portion.
Okay, so I didn't look, can start from the top, uh. The, uh, definition of full-time employee is going to be the forty.
Assuming our legal counsels say that, or, you know, on the, on the, you probably, uh, with, uh, the U. Federal or state laws.
Yeah, you can set your limit wherever you want, a thirty that the IRS, they use it for their own reasons. And the biggest thing you would see is a company that's portable pair of piggybacks off of it, it's thirty hours fast to get overtime. Here you also have a statute that says fifteen hundred hours for attached employee. Gets benefits to that, the line for like, kind of they say part-time lesson, but that doesn't mean that's what full-time is. So you could say full-time was thirty-five. You're entitled to that, but.
But to that, to your point, the fifteen hundred hours was met in July, probably safety. It's now.
Correct, it went up, it went up under, there's.
It, 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 it's also is about. Yeah, you, you would say something, yeah. But, um, just kind of the, the qualifications. That there's, there was some discussion, there's. Uh, very, uh, currently for it, uh.
Yeah, there was some sort of, um, thought in the mess. There is something to do with the. Terminology.
Are we saying, so yes, there are just a terminology, there is already that mention, well, that's, okay, we just. Well, even there is, I mean, it should have been just established now.
Right now, so it's full-time is forty, part-time is around that fifteen hundred rule. There can be a gap in the middle, but that's not the forty. Uh, so you could be a part-time employee at thirty-five hours a week. That's what I'm expected. But I meet the thirty-hour rule, so I got to get insurance in the fifteen hundred rule. But I don't get the benefits that you said only full-time people get. Uh, the leave type thing. So I think would have an extra cost if you lowered that down. To be like thirty-three hours is full-time, you get those benefits. So that's why there's a cost.
So we want to just ensure the policy manual with this platform.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And we can ensure that I was tight and the platform of that.
And I think Tim mentioned there was some language, we're going to adopt some twenty nine, is it, they change, we make the decision.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, when you fully adopt it, that, that line isn't there.
You got it.
So as I said, what does it come in, clean, maybe that helps nice happen. So we did that, I think it was prepared with that.
Yeah, but, yeah, and that line's already.
So what is it, what is the language that you're in a motion, more than that?
Well, I, which is a kind of, I think that's already been put in your policy.
Correct.
Right, so we're just talking about signing on on this faulty and toward. I don't think we need.
Yeah. So at the end of all these sessions, where we meet and make a motion to adopt.
My understanding from Tim is that you're doing that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
The final all of us, you know, sort of every time they do that, okay.
So you'll find out the final new policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, next item would be, we can talk about this.
Yeah, I think two, three, four, all related. But the eight and a system, uh, so you can kind of pull that off as a separate issue. So you would take that up, obviously, and apply to the work, and help with the, the prime tip. And definitely that system. Certainly, and we'll make sure that everyone's aware of it. For the, because we're just. Or because the rest is, so, uh, how would you, have you, but also the push here, you know, let's say, propose, and they can, this is. Well, there, well, and he don't look for active, but once he drafts, then we'll sit it out, and then maybe the, we'll all, we'll say, so we're gonna look at, see what we need, you know, interesting, we don't.
So that, the next one then, on comp time, you already have a section that gives equal comp time, you know, I'm sure your contract probably has something else, so that would be, be place three four. And you're one of the, so, affected department, they already have one-twenty, and they have a cash-out option, I think the, consider of one-twenty, so they're asking about that. And that's fine, but that will have cost implication, because it would be able to accrue more, they could save it for later, and so. Uh, it's not entirely posed, it's, that's a financial one, that's, you don't change those numbers, that's.
Oh, so, just what was proposed is. The issue lies is, they, they hit their limit a little bit in one time, of one-twenty. Uh, is what, though, with the committee proposed was, take it to two hundred with the max payout of eighty hours each, twice a year. You see, we already have a payout of twice a year, but they can't cash out more than eighty hours, so it's not a big hit. They actually have a chance to cash out less time. You're just raising, but they didn't, but you're just raising your cap, your. You're just raising tax, so it's really not, it's actually saving us money, because it's letting them prove versus paying out.
Which can pay out later at a higher.
You would be paying out, we're in that rate, you would be paying out a straight time rate.
So to understand, uh, the kind of, this, for this, and what, where you guys are coming from, what was so relevant, and it's very, like, say, you're not really sure how this can pan out, and you're on a basis, and. If you have a vacation coming in January thirty-first, um, you could be sure how you want to plan that out, or your downtime, and it gets, very easily, it's the future, if you're not quite sure, and so. January, February, if you're really busy, when you want to be, be working overtime, hours, four weeks, or you cannot. Is, is that kind of the, so, and allowing flexibility there with vacation time at the end of the year, and things that it doesn't cost township anything. Would be who we're employees, right?
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they would love to have that cushion, because it, it just gives them. More opportunity, I only have one or two people in my department that even cash their, cash anything out. They usually use it throughout the year, that straight, you know, I mean, it's included in time to have, but, you know, they, they use it throughout the year, for the most part. And then try to wind it down to where they're back to a low number, and then winter comes, and then they blow it back up.
And how many of the office personnel, or, or affected lives initially, how many administrative people in the office now, um, wearing snow and working overtime? So that kind of, that kind of brings, I mean, I'd be able to go in your cans and parts, yeah. That does bring in a, kind of an interesting, um, discussion, that you guys are operating a certain set of circumstances that are. Uh, unique to an extent, other than that, there's now, but you don't have that need. Uh, you, you don't have that size, that, uh, size, you're everyone's, that's, you don't have that tailor, um, you know, uh. You may have an employee annual policy, starting approach, uh, you can police and fire and those.
But I think you're pointing it, but, but there's so many differences here, that one side's, it's all just not that hard. Does, the part-time employee thing, John's part-time guy is looking at fifteen hundred hours, my part-time folks and Paul's have a higher threshold for hours. My overtime calculations required by, by standards act is completely different than anyone else in the township. So my part-time or full-time don't get overtime, it's like, John's guys, they're like, somebody in the office, like, they have to be two hundred twelve hours, it's going to be the period. So, that's kind of what we jammed up, that is, I mean, we need to be as consistent as we can, and there's so many differences, and it's, it gets hard.
You're talking about full-time, I mean, just, for your, or you're talking about part-time?
We're not even part-time, yeah, it's all non-Canadian, but, so we're just talking about full-time. But even, like, full-time guys, the, the fairly, the standards rules for firefighters, overtime is different, that, 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 John dies.
Now, we'll add the complexities of administering, you know, these personal problems, and differences, but.
But that's addressed in there, because you have those different departments, like a township that doesn't have fire, you know, put that section in there, and that was something you thought was, is, you mentioned that, that, that I'm different. It's a very common thing that fires get their own little better guy, but can I give in there, so.
Well, John is, you know, I mean, they're sensitive, they're very, you know, and, I mean, I think it's, it's meritorious, in my opinion.
Well, then, we can necessarily, if you all set up, you back, one, the department, it, it, it is available to other departments, or, or, or employees that are not, that have a patient, so. There's not going to be a whole, you know, unless you get auto works under payroll, or.
No, we're.
Start, they have, so if you know, for the history, it's just, it's, I mean.
But, Laura, Laura would never get that much overtime track, you know, ours, ours is in bits first, it, it comes all.
Right.
And then it winds out about a summer. And then, except for, by the secondary guys, well, they still have ferries on Saturdays, you know, they'll accrue some, or whatever, but. Ours is just, it's the winter time that, that it's us.
Yeah, from your perspective, financially, plus there.
We're on the top again. Really, they, I mean, it comes out at straight time, instead of the time that you have overtime, so it really isn't a hair.
It's, yeah, I agree with you, it's easy to just say, okay, I don't, I don't put that in there, but you just said, I have all the, my, we didn't do this, I think that's, um.
Well, there's a question, but, and I think, for example, an interesting discussion was, you know, that's the point I was bringing up, but there are other things that we haven't mentioned, it's probably. That the service department has, uh, differ from the office first. And then we can put somewhere else over this, it's, we're going, we're saw, and that was just the best thing, you can call, right, and land it, and everything. But there may be other things running into the, for, you can see Johnson's people, they're already.
You need, better than the cost, but. Solids, really.
At one point, there was, um, I don't know, there was, there was a difference in what was the buyer, the, the crew as comp time and what anybody else.
It's a law, it's a federal law.
Yeah, yeah, so what, what are the, the, what's the stipulations there?
It's two forty is the max you can set for regular employees, and fire at least can go up to four eighty.
Alright.
That doesn't mean you set your policy, you can just, that's the max, you can't have a collective bargaining agreement, or, or, goes above that.
Yeah, that's a question, the, the, the governor's either not.
Right, that's a huge issue, so we're gonna have to kind of, okay.
But the two forty is what, what, one of the questions, plus when we.
So then.
I've, 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 I've already got, so I was like, I was, I was actually here, the same, like, so, basically, if you're not, then it's out, am I right?
Uh, well.
Well, I mean, operation, that's what's.
For this one, yeah, it's what you said, I think is in my notes up here, what you guys put on, so I can just change that to, it's, it's two hundred hours, two hundred eighty-eighty? What's that, in the eighty-eighty for the two, they actually said payouts.
Mm-hmm, there you go. And then, when we go, um, when we go there, huh?
That's.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, so we do the, yeah, we have, we have, we have, we have.
Then we're already, we're, we're.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have to do next. All right, good, it's great.
Next one was, uh, they provided a copy of a, an appointment application, and this idea of, uh, where the department had to say, I want to promote this person. Uh, they had a good reason rationale behind it, but you have a very detailed and two-point-two process for posting and, and hiring. Uh, which would bypass that, and as a public authority, you know, and they should keep that very open to protect yourself, if everyone's trying to say, hey. You cheated, you didn't give everyone else a chance, you're just picking your buddy, by having an application process and everything open, uh, and makes that, the.
Shoot, that, that is not, well, what was.
That, that's not the way that is written out.
Yeah, it was, basically the, basically it can be decided within the department, it doesn't have to go out to. We don't have to send something out to the police department saying, we have a job opening for a certain form, we don't have to send it to the fire department, that we have a government performance for. You know, so that was, that was the whole point of it, is just that it, it's all a due process, but we don't have to send it out to the whole entire township, all the employees.
Like the internal vacancy?
Yes.
Yeah, and I agree that your best candidate probably isn't yours, but then you got also put up, whether the best candidate was over there, and he really wanted it, so.
And, and, that's what we got, corporation, we should have, because it gets all the ways, at least, they have that off, you know, right?
Um, and you're right, ninety five or ninety nine seventy nine, it's like permanently within that apartment, so it'd be the best person filled it. But I think it seems long, I might still rest in the void, if you know, at least you're in that opportunity.
What's the drawback of not sharing it rather than not sharing it, their drawback?
Uh, it was just it delayed things. I had to do it for two weeks or quite two weeks and then, but then there's a. And then there's a trustee meeting that is intervened in the middle of that. And then I had to wait another month before I could get back to the trustees to get it, I couldn't tell me forever not to get my promoted. Because it it messed it. Because I had to wait one and a half.
Well, maybe there's a way to fix that part. You know, and we we do spread the word throughout the town. I I think in the interest of to use mixed turn turn that's fair, I think. You know, I I think it's important that those are opening to be shared. And fully on, you know, you've got organization.
When you think about it, if you did a posting. And again, you know, we post these things on our website. But if you didn't generalize posting, it just hangs there. Any employee that you go to, you just can have create that that mechanism on our. But really, you just really get back, see, I mean, the police department, it's not my public service department, say, hey, we need a road officer. Whereas we work with our guys every day. And you know, the next guy in line, yeah, that guy may not be the next guy performing job, but the guy on end, we all know that in our apartment. Just like the police, if they're retired or vote from there, they're not gonna come and say, well, let me protect them. We need one of your guys to come up with this task. They're only going to their guys, let's say, eighty to five, same as the fire. So here's where the, here's where the road comes to notice. So with our nine employees as long as. I think my knowledge always wears things out of that case, we've never had. We did it with Eddie's position, we did it with Tim's position. Uh, we did it with Amber's position, we did it on. Uh, I think we did, I didn't do it for your guy in police, anyway, that's not what. The fact is, in my knowledge, we've been so consistently important, but consistency in fairness, that is. And my guy is expedient, as we rather like to see what is considered. Now, if we created something else, a little exercise, you know, online and outside of that. Then the policy never came to the service department for that. I I may be willing to consider that, but I also think that if you guys are looking at this. And we're looking with this to assess and how that impacts everything else. And I I I mean, that's why we have a year, we consider to be for that, a lot of love written in the document, if you feel that way. That I'm not open to that, and I I if you want to channel me, I'm gonna hear it right now. We have a most important conversation, I think, that consists of how we post by, you know, the decision. And then that that most fairness, it it promotes the best candidate type of.
I think we missed a little bit here, it's not, it's a promotional thing versus a. A new hire, okay, this. A new hire, yes, we have to go throughout throughout the whole interim. And then you're allowed to, and then posted out, like, wannabe and so on and so forth, to open it up to multiple people. We're talking promotional side of things of like, so every time Craig has someone leave. Or, you know, he has a cap to leave. Is he gonna have to? Is his, is he gonna have to take and send it out to all of us that we can apply to this tasking position?
That's not it. Well, I don't, the position is open.
It's a new positions.
And so what is going to be the process to build that new position? So I'm gonna generally post the position, I think, or we'll get a choice of either and so on, it can be currently posted. So anyone that is a township employee will supply for that, if they have qualifications, has to be willing to do so. And I think that's just a fairness issue, I don't know, we're not working fast, and I don't know if you work with a lot of agencies as well, or. You not at least in a home posting, we give all employees an opportunity for that for the position. Again, it's up to the supervisor ultimately to determine who they are recommending hire to afford. Uh, but it's just a fairness issue, and I still strongly about that, and we should get everybody those opportunities. You know, I remember playing, and Chief Ryan on Alora saying that Scott Law actually started and made it storm. And became a firefighter, and posted, it wasn't posted, where it gave them the term of employment, able to 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 apply for that job. It happens very rarely, I get that, but at least there's those opportunities there and.
But there were circumstances in the back of my head, right?
Do you know what I said about Green River? We have to be, we have to be even in. We have to, it may not make sense, you may not like the the trajectory or the path that we have to follow. But at the end of the day, if we don't follow that, and we don't have that kind of consistency, or we don't have that kind of approach. That opens the township up a lot of opportunities. And we have to be mindful of that, we may not like that, I agree, I don't like it. But at the end of the day, it it's just. If that's what we have to do to be fair and across the board, that's what we have to do, and. You know, again, there are worse than any circumstance, uh, he started actually, I believe. Uh, before the service department, he was actually part of the bottom company. Uh, and so, but it was volunteered, the the teams, I'm not mistaken. Maybe that's the sign important again, and the rest of the Green River. I have a situation that, you know, when they ask me how many fire, how many, you know, this is, and how many staff lost, doesn't matter. It was one. I haven't seen my, is one or it's none, it'll be none, I promise you, it'll be one. You know, I'm repaired, but I have, from this team, I have time for the one, you know, repaired.
So in reality, this is probably not ever gonna come up, you know, honestly, right? So I think it's, we're spending too much time on something that ultimately would make zero difference. So I think you're gonna know who you're gonna promote, because based on their qualification. You're gonna know with whom you're gonna build a position, because you're gonna select, you're gonna be the one recommended and select. And so I I do think we can end up with the right person in that position. But I just don't see that as something we should spend a whole lot of time on, because ultimately, it's not gonna make a difference.
From the screen lines, we say that that's obviously going to be the first, a week instead of two or three weeks.
And there you go, there's how you can streamline that process.
Instead of waiting to promote it to one, because like this last time around, we were banned. A position, you know, a decision made in position, we were banned for two weeks, waiting until we say, actually, it's your job.
And been too, too lost in the one is that that hardship. I mean, we're looking at creating policy for payments, but I think one of the factors we did, we did think about that one instance that that hurt it. Because then we could work on it.
So we've already addressed the last. Make sure everybody's happy and not standing, okay, we're we're good with it. All right.
Sick leave, uh, so that recommendation is exactly, and I know they said it's your definition. Excludes sick leave, if you work, if you're sick in a, no week, you don't count those hours towards your total forty. And so they're asking to reconsider changing that, the standard is hours worked, you already do include holiday and vacation to be counted extra. And keep sick leave out, um, that was us. It's a, that one comes to you, there's an increase, obviously, potential increase overtime, so it's a financial thing I gotta bring to you.
I I don't see the problem with this, as long as, and somebody in sort of a verbage here, as long as we're monitored for abuse. If we see an issue where this is starting to become abusive, uh, then we need to back that on, but I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
So to give you a little background, the reason why is. We had somebody we set on Monday, uh, on Monday news that, well, they're back to work. On Wednesday, we get a snow event on a Thursday. And they're working overnight, you know, throughout, they work their shift that day, and then they work their night. To clear the roads, well, they can't use their sick time, or they can't, they don't crew it here until they. Filled with sixteen hours, and it was kind of, it was really hurt them.
Well, you can, now that you can plan in period, next year, right? So if you want more, you didn't have any overtime, because you had to use it, or you couldn't have it.
We've always had.
This is, that's like a week.
Basically created, it would later, for more. And and so they got, it's like redouble their hours and make up that time overnight. Before they actually, even if there was a voluntary illness, they have, those from a medical professional asset. And so I think that the idea was, hey, you know, if one was legitimately sick, I don't want to get so far, and hold an extra time with them, they happen. They only miss out on, you know, their time and half as well.
Or if their family member was sick.
Yeah, so the last thing you want, somebody who's sick, who's worried about is what's gonna happen to their, you know, their time, and so this is a small. I would say, it's not small, it's, I think it's appropriate, and I don't think we should spend too much time on this, when this is bound to no brain, in my view. I don't see the the consequence of that side.
As supportive, yeah, as long as it's monitored, and that's a very part of the data, so there's a lot of abuse, so you're right, you want to, they're spending lots of time.
Were they wrong discussing it? Apparently, it's very common, because there there was abuse in the past that why it was driven this way? But no one wants to see it being said. And.
I don't know.
Let's say, if we start seeing it, then back we go.
Yeah, they're they're all, they're all for this, um. Because everybody does lose their, lose their, not me, but, um, only power, like, what is not me, and of course. Do lose their, um, ability for overtime, yes. Say they were, okay, let's reverse the, reverse it, so there was a snow event on Monday, Tuesday. And Friday, it's maybe it was possible. And you can't, I mean, you can't help that, you go to, you go to the nursing hospital, but yet they lose their, they already worked.
Right, but let's just say, a guy knows that, and he says somebody can be part of a certain hospital, but it's not, doesn't come in, so it's. That's where it comes in, and that that can happen quite often. I mean, unfortunately for you guys, I have heard of you guys that have managed, so I'm very, I'm very, and I don't think my company is. The institute, and, uh, but you punish all of your guys for the discretion of a person. No, once, once, once they realize, they know there's not an electric fence, they all, it's like. So it's like they have an electric fence. But that's why we're good job to it, you're shocked a few times, and so your back's off, and that's where we're at now, no one's taking advantage of it. You take the electric fence, you remove it, and it takes a while, but once they realize it's not there. They go out over it, is the analogy, um. So I don't think that it would be getting advantage of immediately, but I think it would be taken advantage of as possibly as time gone, if they knew that was a lot. I I I wish everybody that could be trusted in the world, and that everybody would do the right thing.
I mean, that's where you're developing a risk on for that, I guess.
Yeah, and then there was a discussion about, well, there's somebody who had to, they are sick. And there was like a snow event, or some sort of thing that where somebody asked to work overtime. Um, there was a discussion about whether they should have to run out or not for those days, or somebody else.
Some managers, yes. I hope for this to occur, but the reality then is, most of us don't just get out a million million dollars of work anymore. Okay, we make them come in, you know, and then we back, and that's just the way it's gone, it used to be different from the old ones. But those days are gone, so if somebody's sick, they generally are brought in.
But it also comes back to, like, if my kid is sick. I'll call the doctor, they'll ask, they'll ask what symptoms are, and they'll say, wait twenty four, forty eight hours before you run them in.
Sometimes.
And so how are you supposed to get a doctor's note for that?
Well, eventually, they're gonna have their contact with their pressure.
But if if it's a, but they say, let's wait, it's probably viral, there's nothing we can do. So if you start feeling better the next, if you're feeling better the next day, you don't know them.
So the state of Ohio says over ten days, over forty hours, and we're looking at a certain amount of that.
So it would basically be, it'd be, you'd do about eight hour days instead of forty hour weeks. It's what it's all changing.
And the other thing that I would say to this is, you can utilize any other form of time off that we have, and still accrue overtime, other than simply. It's the only one regularly at this side. So ultimately, what it comes down to is the employee is punished for using the sick time that they earned. And not by using their vacation time or comp time to supplement the doubt. Either way, you're still sick, if I have a clue, and I have to take three days off, whether I take comp time vacation or sick time. The only thing that thinks me is, if I come back to work and it's a sick hour, I can no longer accrue overtime.
Yes, but how, is there a notice required for vacation time?
Uh, vacation, I believe there will be, but comp times, it's already accrued time, I think it's a twenty four hour notice.
So you could just use the comp time instead.
You could, but you're still, you're still losing, uh, you're still losing your accrued, uh.
You know, thirty three hours coming in for a sick, and then I just eight hours, uh, I give one hour.
Well, you you could refuse, you could consider a bucket, right? So the bucket has to be forty, if you want to be getting the bucket, it's comp time, or sick time, or vacation. And then work to your forty, but then a snowy event, you have twenty four hours of overtime over two days, then you require the twenty four hours. The the question is, is make the bucket an eight hour day. So that you meet the requirements of your employer, that you've worked your eight hour day in some fashion. And then at the end, ultimately, it comes down to for them. Is the snowy, is is the the time problem, because now you're telling somebody to come in. In a healthy condition, work twelve, sixteen hours straight.
Why don't we have a sick and vacation and comp time, what sense does that have?
A lot of places are going to that, you know?
They are, they are, stairs have been over ninety six years. I mean, that would really simplify, because all the rest is just conjecture, we're just, you know, speculating on what you tell us, right? And I know I'm taking like a really, you know. Right wing view of this, and I trust in people, but I, you know, I think that's not how you have a version, and. You know, most people are probably fair and honest, but, you know, there'd be some people who are just, and if you're just gonna have that, why not just keep it flat? Even playing, that signifies us people being honest, doesn't it? Maybe now you're just, now you're just, and now you're just, and then you put PTO and everything.
I said, you're also not concerned by that, anybody who's been for volunteer. Yeah, if you just go to straight PTO, there's absolutely no any press.
We don't, and we don't pay these guys, we all call to come in, that's something we want to do.
So how is the PTO not centralized on their?
Well, as it stands right now, we're allowed to accrue comp time. And there's events in the park, where there's some areas that need to be taken care of on weekends. Right now, it's open to take, you can work this weekend, well, why would anybody want to then work their weekends? When we're already just getting a PTO, it would just be overtime, it would point back and take our overtime, so. But there's, there's no incentive there to want to add an extra.
You know, the reality is, the reality is that this is where it's going, and it's not just in the public sector. It's going this way in the private sector, we may not be ready to adopt, we may, we may not be ready to adopt this right now. But I can assure you, this is where it's going.
But I have trouble though, you know, back to your bucket, for example, you just told me that. That if I use my comp time or my vacation time, like I play with it, you know, I got probably the vacation. I can use that and get my overtime, but if I am sick, I can't. And that is now, good as a dick, I'm sliding it over there, I'm proving sick time. And then some, some are there on.
Can't just call a sick on the day that you wanna be.
Hey, gentlemen, it's a carry, this, you know, this is not a, so. So firing both, and, you know, but at the end of the day, I think that's all. Do you imagine passing it through your land that's sick and miss out on overtime, and still have, and then I cannot use it? You know, you know, the template. So, I, I'm still not saying that this, and. The PTO is there, they don't, so, I mean, somebody can work overtime, and get paid time, and, yeah, but. For something outside of their forty hour being turned that. I don't understand, I don't get the, how that.
Definitely, most of the guys would prefer to take that time when they can get their overtime. They they, we enjoy those days off, you know, so instead of just a bucket.
Take all of PTO and treat it as sick time, I'm saying maybe take all of PTO and treat it as comp time. Right, and you just do that, and everything under PTO, and then you come up with that mention of how PTO can be used, because it would be. Uh, it it could be the same that I mentioned, it's not comp time, it's to be used.
So I think it's, it's a contradiction between the two of you are, he's thinking you're not gonna allow the comp time, and you're here anymore.
So I, 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 I'm saying, I will consider the comp time to use and not treat all as sick time. But it's almost like, you know, having those multiple definitions isn't fair, and incentivize people to be dishonest. And then also the fact that you guys would like to be able to use PTO and not have a hit against your reading hours, so you can still get overtime. Which I understand that's a thing, but someone's like, we should just make everything PTO, and then people also. Um, having to consider, we treat your gas comp time, which I mean, you guys are pretty shit.
The, the, what would happen to the townships, just like, as far as that support one, three, two hour, and everything? Every day you're eight percent, would that just go away? Or would that be your?
We still get that, but it would be detailed. And we're just going with a channel PTO bucket, so you can use it if you're sick, use it if you. I don't know, comp time, you can use it for comp time, or whatever, the bucket will still fill the same, but it's just you fall on together, use whatever you want. Now you're not lying, John, John's not lying, guys. Or is it that?
Are you then also going, is that mean, the. Which we'll get to this later, the accrual time, five, you know, one year, three years, five years, fifteen years, twenty five years, is that a rule? I think, and just go to an hourly. If you have a patient that out, then then.
You would, you get a certain amount of PTO time, and then you get a certain amount of vacation this year. Right, you get a certain amount of PTO times, not nothing changed. No, it's just you're changing the way that you play, like, the quit silence, and these gameless things, they're really nothing.
Like I said, we give you the money, you spend it, you know?
Okay, you do rock, it's a really good one.
Right.
Oh, it'd be a complete revision of your current app. Holiday, vacation, and sick leave would just be replacing, so it would be in here.
Donated time.
If you wanna put it all on there, yeah, I'm gonna do it. Today, college, all that, now, after you. Sick leave for now, to be through overtime, I catch it all the hours. Move forward and then get your PTO language that you can withstand, because I always see the land be new, and then it's set those limits. For year and everything, it's gonna take a while to. You can mask it or what you need, and then just come around. I don't know, maybe the years long out, to that, and then just see the session soon.
I mean, I agree, because you would just amend and then replace section five or whatever, the PTO policies. Well, I think you'll have some samples, like, hey, here's a sample of what that looks like, look at it, and tweak the numbers, then it's. Going through here and seeing every place it mentions sick or vacation holiday, and I reword that section, because so many different sections come back to. Sick vacation holiday.
So, you say that hours. Yeah. I really got it, it's mine, mine, mine.
Wait.
Then there's that, um, too, I got a computer, so.
Well, I, I think we're all more or less in favor of creating sick. Two, two times how, how, like, so, but. Are we, or, um. And then it shows, which is that, which you. For the definition of overtime. But then, but then, um, uh. You know, looking, you know, having a serious time and then to straighten it again, so, I, I think that makes funnest sense, I didn't really say it for everybody. But then, and then ensuring that the definition of like PTO is under the more available conditions of comp time or something. You don't wanna, you don't agree that the definition of PTO, have everybody do yourself. But you, it, but we'll session on that, if I can, if I see one, that it's not affecting that at all, the PTO. And, and we look into.
Well, you know, and you see that, obviously, the fact that, the fact that. Because if they have, if they can use it for whatever. Okay, if it's five hours per week that they accrue, if they can use that sick time whenever they want. That's even more days off. That they can have and not have doctors, okay? So if, if they take off. For that, I'm trying to figure out.
That's why you have a certain time policy, and that's why you have a certain amount of time you have to maybe advance to meet your PTO. So if you want a PTO and you wanna create a vacation thing, you have to let me know some reasons and things. If you call it a day before your shift and you don't show up and you don't have a doctor's note, you're getting great enough and that needs to be in the attendance policy. So you need a way to hold people, have, don't give you proper notice, like, I'm off. But if they give you proper notice to take you time off, that's all within a framework of how you orient your disciplinary policy for how people take time off.
But that said.
It's not, it's, it's not a framework of how you define certain things, you might even win any money, but if you define certain things with just PTO, then you have, you know, look, if you want scheduled time off, you have to schedule it two weeks in advance and maybe that would all have to be part of the policy when you write it. And if you don't, if, if, you know, don't schedule it two weeks, you can't only, that, that A or two, uh, you know, or the night before a tax minute, you know, five in the morning, you check it off and, and tell me that, you know, you're not gonna be in, and you don't have a doctor's note, well, technically, and, and you leave a little clause in there, it's, it's a distraction in the man in there. You know, this is a, how to keep up to, for exceeding termination. If you violate this two to three times within thirty days, within six months, within a year, but that all needs to be gone out of the client, so that you can all, we will count, we'll get them in the board. But that's why we would propose sitting down and having a deeper dive on this subject. So you can lay out all of them, you won't get concerned, you're even have and others might have, so that we can write out a real policy. And we might do that, that is, clearly very complex. But it's something that, that complexity, we'll take a month, three months, that are actually doing that. You know, I think we just, the general PTO, when they got with the line, like, I mean, you know, it maybe, maybe we're just having a parrot call like that, but there's, there's more.
Yeah, it was, my fault was is, you know, yeah, they get sick time, but they don't generally use it, now letting them get sick time, and they're just calling pay time, only that it just, they can. Instead of having, you know.
Well, and the only reason that they never use the sick time is because of that punishment aspect of it, though. You use eight hours of sick time and now you have to work sixteen hours, but you're only gonna get eight hours.
Think about the PTO, uh, uh, you can use the PTO, I mean, still get analyzed, people keeping the record, as you can still get your enough, you're a reviewer, you refuse policy. That's all within your, uh, w- w- within your, uh, you know. Disciplinary policy essentially, which should be within or somehow, you know, policy. But that said, it wouldn't be doing our job, we can sit down and have a steeper discussion. And, and hear all those angles out, that's.
And my thoughts, I had to say, have the three months against your plan, you guys might get hashed out, as a long before that. You got two contracts that are still on sick vacation leave and those guys may not even wanna move. And you'd have two different policies, which then just causes, maybe. You know, like that, but that's a possibility too.
And that can, can you base it on, on like, here's a service, like vacation time, the points of occasion for your new service, so everybody's not needs in, uh, PTO.
The, the. Yeah, I mean, yeah, you, but that's all that structure that we got to lay in and, and consider. As we move forward, I, what are we doing tonight?
I'm sorry, not that.
So, but. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna treat the sick time for whatever purposes is comp time, so. But I think we're, yeah, well, it'd be across the board, but the one is the different effects would be skin.
Right.
I mean, we, for all, you know, not need to, for, it's, it's, it's a brilliant.
Whatever.
You, you, uh, I think we're all agree that, I mean, uh, considering the PTO and everything. The staffs, the, the, uh, you need, uh, money, or five, whatever you want, I wanna look at, I'm trying to turn it in, sweet.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's where it's gone, you know, generally speaking.
Okay.
Uh, that's why you have the vacation all over, uh. And, I mean, that's, I call you, you have a user loser policy right now, it expands to a non-union. So, uh, having something that would mean or something, there's a cost, there's a, uh, extra lead. And so, there's just, there's a cost implication of that, so bringing it up.
So we, you didn't remove this channel.
Yeah, right, which is calm, it's, yeah, that's already standard. Uh, you know, there are many places except the federal government where you can carry over.
Okay, so our guys come in before they, they have, like, pre-nated on. If they've got extra hours left, they'll come and ask the dress PTO, if it would be okay to carry over, and that's.
Case by case, right, I've, we've seen and we've done it.
We've done that every year.
Yeah.
But we've done that for, that either.
Well, the, the spirit of bringing it up was to take it so that you guys don't have to go on the case by case basis for vacation. And take up time and meaning and find your route to say, oh, yeah, you can take three hours, it's more like, you know, you're all over, helping for the hours, if you need to go and edit, you don't, you know, it's, uh, that, that was more or less the spirit of that. That idea for the policy angle, so.
There is gonna be any new laws. It may, we don't have that. You know, we'll get to make a motion every time.
And it doesn't happen often.
Has there been a case that anybody could have thought between that?
No.
Uh, we trimmed somebody.
We tried to cry. You couldn't, or he turned his stuff.
Man, I get, that's kinda letting your department, I'd say, hey, watching those vacation balances, I'm like, guys. Take this.
It's more so, uh.
So it's, I'm gonna, I, I, it's about, like, it's. Easy to set up, I'm, uh, not, I, 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 I just, sessions, well, I mean, this is very difficult for your department is. Um, so, I was just, I, I, I'm going back to. Days, right? You heard everything. I'm going back to the PTO scenario, which we laughed at, we've done, but, but, um. Somebody can use all of PTO on one big call. And get a, a shit of, uh, or they can do the same for their sick time, you guys, but if you're going sick time, you get.
Eight hundred hours.
You buy it up to eight hundred hours. So you can use all your sick time on one phone. So I have worked. You know, I've worked forty hours, right, that week, I could work, I even have a smooth one, and over three or four days, I've worked forty hours, probably. And then I could just qualify it on my sick time, and then that. And just to advance the amount of time they have. But, uh, I don't know if I was responsible, that is, I'm trying to go and say. You know, I, I'm a big eyes that are under the assumption that no one's gonna take advantage of it, just go ahead and not allow that to not be penalized.
I, I think it's more along the lines of. Once again, it was filling up the bucket not to make it overflow, the overflow was work that was needed not to make more money, right? So if, if you're taking time off for sickness, whether it was before or after the overtime, it was, you've been in forty hours to look at it on a daily basis. I've made my obligation and attempted an eight hour meeting, whether that was pay time or sick time. You, you're not allowed to say, hey, I just wanna cash this out now, there are times that you can cash it out, and you wouldn't be able to cash it out a time and a half. You would cash it out as straight, it's, it's regular rate, so it's not that.
I was specifying that.
It's, it is.
You can give it now, like, it, it, so it, it was really. So my point is, if, if. Your sick day has four overtime, and we, on a four hour weekly basis. Then there's no limit, I think that's our problem to the greater, whereas, you know, if you work thirty nine hours, I have, you know, hundred hours of sick time, I have all that hundred hours. Of course, you need to.
No, yeah, really, it's, uh, sick leave was to replace your work day.
Yeah.
You get eight hours, uh, you wouldn't be able to say, I want to cash out all my four hundred hours of sick leave this week.
But if you do not, you have.
Is, uh. Well, in, in, in his thing, the sake of the week, yeah, and then you, PTO, like, I want, what, I work Monday, eight hours a day, PTO, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours. For your normal work day.
Currently, you can, you can, more than the days that you work and we fall on for vacation time, first. Uh, so it's only limited to five days.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that part of this pain. I just like how they're answering, you know, there's a big, uh, uh, uh. All right, all right, so, sorry. So, how are we gonna guess? We discussed it, but we didn't.
The vacation award.
I, I believe that is. No, no, the user was.
I, I would leave it as is.
For now.
It, it, it will, especially, yeah. Because it don't have an impact on the PTO. For me. We're, we're, we're going to send it, the PTO, we made that decision without an impact, that's not on. And then you need to be, so let's just leave it as is. Have the PTO strain, you know, my clarify. Fair enough. So, we're gonna put in that, but it's.
Now, I can tell you on the next one, that's kind of, uh, uh, administration on, on sick leave.
No, that was actually, I think, they, uh, you're, maybe, I mean, it's, yes, you can take a little bit, but it's from an hour and thirty minutes, and that. Yeah, that's, I'm not seeing that.
How does that, what, what, how does that work? You mean, let's call off, like, so if I am sick at the end of the day, like, I can take off and only charge thirty minutes to my bank. For any, a minimum of an hour or so, an hour would come off. Or you come in late, as you were saying, or something. It's at least a minimum of an hour. Uh, so, the, the thing is potential abuse, not saying that's what they're gonna do here, but that's where you start to see, so I'm gonna leave it for thirty, end of the day, just take it off thirty minutes, like, at least an hour, because some people try to get down to fifteen minutes or something. And you might see potential abuse, that's just, and the norm is usually just a longer.
I was gonna say, that was my question, is this practice elsewhere, or is this not like that, odd question?
I have seen thirty in places before, and I think I've seen fifteen, maybe that's kind of full of union contracts, but it's predominantly, I would say, hour of the most common.
We use fif- fifteen minute increments. And, and our contract addresses overtime in fifteen minute increments, now it does say vacation no smaller than one hour. But, uh, comp time is fifteen minute increments. Because the theory is, let's say I have, I'm gonna work a detail for Locust Corner School. Or a Merwin School, if I get off at four o'clock and the detail starts at four, there has to be s- uh, some separation, because you can't be in two places at one time.
Well, this is where you, that's kind of the play, I think it's a specific, please.
Right, I love it, I think it's not here, yeah, and.
Well, I'm just saying, the one, yeah, actually.
Yeah, I understand you.
I've seen. That's still the booking thing, that's, that's, that's how it is to, you're booking, right? I mean. That's mad.
I'll tell you, I mean. I think changing it from one hour to thirty minutes, you're gonna have less use. Because here's the thing, if this guy, he's gonna take, say, he only needs to leave a half hour, right? Well, I gotta use a whole hour of sick time in order to use it, so I'm gonna leave a half hour. I think you would have more chances of use having one hour versus thirty minutes.
Well, typically, if you're gonna put the PTO on there, move to, like, it's just general PTO, so I'm gonna take a half day, right? Or I'm gonna take three or four days a day or something, and you could work though, a half hour increment and leave, right? I do, I have a thought, I mean, that's, particularly in the PTO especially. But I do think this is the problem with personal, we that, that doesn't, that it's totally across the board. Not just in, in a certain part, but she's all along the line. And they, you got it deployed as a, as a kid, as an official woman. You, you see third events and that, I mean. So, I'm, I'm a mutual, I'm putting them.
We, we have employees that have been, have had doctors for them and come back and because we they had to take that hour, sat in a car and waited for thirty minutes, they come back and do work. So.
I love that, yeah.
But if I'm saying, I can see this having less impact than. You, you, you do the other.
And there's no added work involved from your side of things, there's not a apparent budget, is there a budgetary thing, sorry, and I don't remember, I see it.
Just get our employee back to work a half hour earlier.
Yeah, well, that's, I don't know.
Crack after.
That's right.
Sure.
You try it.
Right, uh, vacation, your current rule goes, was it one, five, fifteen years for each of the steps? And so they were looking at like, hey, a step right in the middle, I think it would go there, or over that road. Well, uh. Most places. One side, fifteen, twenty five, yeah. Most places are, there's not that ten year span in the middle of your career. It's five, ten, fifteen. And then, and then twenty, and then you're done, and then you finish that career. So that was just, you know, just all on a matter of when it comes to, but. Yeah, the statute, like, the cities at all, when, like, on board places, it's like one, eight, so it's a weird number, one, eight, sixteen or something, and then if some people adopt the five, ten, fifteen policy, some have this. It's, it's, yeah, you have no standard of what you have, no minimum.
What would be said, the negative impact of changing the bank?
It's just, it increases the vacation bank, so your ten years enough, and they'll get just an extra week.
It would start at ten, the proposal started at, and.
And stuff like this, because it would start at ten years. They're still following the regulation.
I mean, normally, maybe, in the current policy, we talk about it that way, it's just this long delay of the promotion there, I mean, you know, it's like be there for a long period of time, getting a little bit of vacation, so, you know, it's just, you might have saved. I'm guessing that, for even the day, wrote by us, and, 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 I was, I, I, this, I mean, he's raising his hand.
Uh, this, this was actually written at the same time as the longevity A idea. It was, you know, okay, hey, if he wants to get this every week at ten years instead of that, to draw out fifteen, but if that proved to be an issue, how about longevity instead of the ten years? Instead of, you know, vacation or, you know, it was, it was more written on that, that I think it got divided in this, uh, in this pamphlet where they didn't run together as like ideas, if you, if you take my meaning there. So that was, that was the thought there, it was just something in that ten year mark, because most places do something at a ten year mark and we do not. So it would just be, it was an idea, something that might be a draw for employee employment. You know, things like that, that, hey, look at this, at five year increments, we get something, you know, there's a, thanks for being here, thanks for the, your work, you know? So, watch. Yeah. Go watch personally, that's, uh. That's okay.
I just, I told. I can see it, it's a, we have a, so, we're in this session.
Well, we had a, not next watch, right? It'd be, it'd be, uh, a lot of cigarettes. In there, we're in, we said, I had, and I'm part of the, it's, it's, my cigar, and you want that? Okay, my cigarettes. Um.
So right now, it's just five, one, fifty, this whole, so. So, I mean, two, five, one, fifty, this one does have a national.
This one does.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, like, this one does, like, the legislation does, you know?
And, and he just, uh.
You currently, you know, what do you got?
It's one, five, fifteen, twenty five, uh. We last year were split. We last year were split by ten year.
I can, we have a one. But.
I mean, first two weeks.
Yeah.
Similar to the minimum. I'm I'm very, uh. Except for the thirteen instead of fifteen. The union contract is just one, five, thirteen, twenty-five.
No. Thirty. You guys want thirty, but that's. Seriously.
Bachman.
Nobody, nobody, we're already being silent as well, there's no one to say that. This one, I will, in fact, we see. We are making this, we're making a decision, I have a decision. For a match.
I agree.
You know, and and we are actually agreeing that in the environment we're in, in the labor market, we have to. Uh, it's a tough balance, naturally, we have to meeting our services. Uh. And I think we have thirty forty's and, and I'd like that, you know.
I I agree. But again, there are some fiscal impacts here. That we just can't ignore, and true, but that. How many people you're helping are involved in five and a two? We we've discussed some of these issues on the other, right now, three, even though I'm somebody after.
Yeah.
If you ask.
Well, we do have.
That's early, but it's, it's Mike's.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm.
That's what I mean, so I I appreciate the attention. Game during, uh, I think, applying for a job. You know, asking this question, and we all get actually advised, it's just. It's probably an upset, I think, immediately. So that's what I would probably hear is, once again, kind of the fact that. Say. And I just, let's, let's look at that conversation first, because it may, there's a main point. If we're doing this sort of. So they don't, it's for. So I I would, or we'll just leave it as it is for now, that we make a better decision. In the American, particularly if you're. Right, and so let's just, let's hold off on that for a moment, and just, let's just move it into the conversation.
Yeah, like, if you did, it would be cheaper to do a five dollar. In America, or, you know, longevity, ten years or whatever, whatever it's called.
Either you're, I found your gun, the. So that's, that's. Yeah.
The next, I know it says ultimately one, but if the book to deal with that retiring air policy, we change them through all that, I know that's fixed.
Well, again, change, unless you were reversed to this point, that that basically is. It's all been out, I was, that. I mean, I have a question for my, that, because she and and I felt that. Um, to have a break. Talking, that's a pretty typical retirement service for a lot of folks.
Yeah.
You know, the concern from cheap rocket, and they keep rocking with this, you know, this type of free books now. Um, so, you know, how quickly can we get some money back in, so you gotta balance that with. Having a legitimate break in service, and then you're gonna have the question of. Where the person that, you know, retired one day while working very hard for the success of God. As a private secretary, so you got a lot of questions with that, but. You know, the beginning, the initial operation in there to have thirty days, and I had stuck with Ryan, and we thought that had to see. Yeah, and we went through that, that, that's.
Now. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no.
So, I thought thirty days was reasonable too, until I was speaking with Jason, and Jason brings up a good point that. You know, with limited personnel, if we lose somebody for thirty days and we're being under staff for thirty days.
And I think we put it to, you could still could.
Yeah, there's a, then we need a circumstance language, other laws need to circumvent that.
Okay, as long as there's a break of, you know, not, not retirement Friday, and then start, you know, on a Sunday.
Correct, yeah, I think I'd say, like, an hour's a break or whatever, but. It was, I did the language that was first proposed, kind of made it seem like it was almost guaranteed, I could retire and start the next day. And the big thing is opers or opf would be like, oh, you get to lose some money if you do that, and I don't want them going, yeah, get rehired, come back, and. Because my policy says that, and then I find out I lose money, I don't want them yelling at you guys, saying, you just cost me some retirement, right, because you told me to come back the next day. Well, you also should talk to your timer before you did that, and so the thirty days that they recommend, so I wanted that thirty out there, they choose to. Lose some money, and you need them. Uh, then I start to.
She running, because there are different conditions, just moving to my house.
Oh, that's, that's completely different.
So it's really, it's just really so. Or my entering drop, and you're so worried. It's dropped.
So, so why are you hiring the last thirty days? Yeah.
We know where we live.
You're not retiring.
Um.
Just answer that. Then.
But to answer that question, uh, could be a certain factor, we would hold it on emergency, right? So, we've been saying less.
And it's also not again, you don't have to. Rehire any retiree, that's just kind of a agreement, I mean, we'll talk about, yeah.
So since we have that language in the event of a urgent situation. You know, there will be a problem, there will be thirty days.
Yeah, we want, we want the thirty day.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, so hopefully a lot of talking, once L parties, so I'm saying, not only the need, but also the financial implications, so that they don't blame any.
So you have a sense.
Uh, the personal records one, can you guys? Clarify, because it says get legal clarification.
I think. My understanding, I know. From the guys, I. Is that, I think there is no clear whether or not, if you wanted to employ one of the acts us, never first and other, they have to submit a public record request to do that.
Yes.
Or they, or they just have access by request.
No, but it's not in your job, and you go open that door and go get it, if you want your act as a private citizen, and granted, they may. You may take a public record request from a stranger, little more detailed stuff here, at least send an email. To all proper commands, can I please get access to this and lead time and everything, but don't just walk in expecting you're gonna get it just because you work here. This should be, if, uh, since, uh, a request.
And as a policy decision, you don't want people coming in and out of their personal record without your knowledge, right, so you need to know when people are.
Those are, those are. Yes.
Well, this. Policy that says you have to make a request, um, and have a good bit of writing, and if you need any.
Yeah, it's like, you know, I'm like, sending them to my, you know, buttonhead, and you know, starting, like, can I please see this, so it's gone. Sure, go ahead, on Tuesday, go, go in there and do it. Correct, and that's kind of, but it may not be the formal, whatever you give to a guy on the street who wants to see everyone's pay records, but. Doesn't necessarily have to be, but at least there's, it's not a kind of request.
There has to be a public record request.
Right, but that can be done in any.
I understand, I know how they work. They define it. But I I think it creates policy, the procedure again, back to that, where it's like, oh, they have no, they're allowed that, well, I give them. People access, it's like, okay, I get it, but, but if somebody else is in a nervous issue tomorrow, and I guess I have that, that available. So we have all.
Um, the safety glasses. Come on, it's part of, well, it's an issue of whether it's just mandatory safety equipment that is provided or not, I think, was weird.
Without prescription.
Oh, script.
So, I I wish most could, we provide a site and board employees that require safety glasses that are also have prescriptions. So that we get help to to offset that, once. Honestly, it was just not a problem, I basically, well, edited for us, so. I mean, I think there's probably, we we do, for our scanner smart supplies, safety glasses are very important. Some people do have direct vision, they don't have contacts, and so in those circumstances. Is it, is it reasonable to provide a site, and then just figure out what that is, and, you know, if they don't want. Thousand dollar safety glasses, and then they have, have a difference, but.
Or if they lose their safety glasses, that, and all of the time, hey, you give them, you know, I want to use my sphere, like, for.
But at least that's time, I'm, 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 you know, you know, that's, it was fine, I, I said, it's. It's like, I'm looking for a shop around. And.
That was ultimately, the, the idea was a site, and it was, you know, can I just bring my receipt for my glasses, you know, and if it's. Four hundred dollars, you know, I'll order it, like, you know, whatever. It it was the idea, just something, because we, you know, we had a, we need safety glasses, you have five dollars a year. There.
What's, what's, so it's that. Yeah, that, that's why we like, how you can check that this is the side, this is. See, you can't go over the line of the general on this, literally, drain, and, but, that is, that is, again, but I.
It was why you said, I really especially.
Maybe some interesting thing, yeah, okay, so who would do that, what we got?
Yeah, we need to know that, that, but I think, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they call it, but I think it's, it was, we're wanting to just warm her up.
I mean.
I mean, I, I mean, anything is better than nothing, so I mean, it's a bad box, I mean, it's. Something is better than nothing.
Yeah, I would favor, because they're, they're designer, they're.
They would buy in less, same as. So you're just compensating, because they're going to the safety, the, that they had to buy like more expensive ones. Because they're safe, they have to be safe. For.
No, I'm not gonna say, but I'd be wary of some classes.
Yeah. You can get regular safety glasses for like five bucks, if you didn't, you just get it, you know, with standards, or, you think it's not a fancy.
Well, I think we should, we should, we're the hallmark on that, figure out whether, what's it, what's the price for, and, right, they're basically seventy glasses. I mean, if it's fifty dollars, we don't wanna authorize a hundred and fifty dollars.
Absolutely.
And so, that's one of the homework, I think, I mean.
Your lights are prescription.
Pardon?
Lights are prescription.
Well, I would say is, he would be buying, or, anyone's.
Right.
So if.
Don't we get a vision of their influence, you know? So we can get safety glasses vision?
It doesn't, it doesn't cover safety glass.
I mean, I don't know. But I think we create that, like, anything would be better, not, create some kind of, maybe, for, I think.
I think there's a small one.
Uh.
Considerably.
Yeah, this is. Unless, unless it's.
We know the same, you know, you can, we can.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't. We can't say we want to.
This would be probably about, I mean, administrative policies, it goes to, I mean, part of the personnel policies, procedures.
That's.
Uh, so I would just come in and say, this is a administrative policy that we're recommending for safety glasses, we need a file, and if I should. Or, like, you know, you have a decision, it doesn't bring about, it's a. It's a motion and, or, we should.
Yeah, it's the black side.
This is, then, out of, in all from angle, there is a section about safety equipment. That is provided by the, I mean, ID, vests, glasses, things of that nature, so. It was just kind of getting the thinking back on that safety with a, a, by a restrictive safety glass, was. I get, I get excited, or, or.
So I think it's reasonable, it's a good faith gesture on our part, although you can use regular glasses, and I put safety glasses on top, right? But I agree with it, I support it, I think it's fine, you know, but any safety equipment that is employed would be required, heavy, essentially, by, there's a basic. Black, etc., right, so, but yes, that's everything.
Okay.
I know.
All right. Is that, this is, any, this is.
Sorry.
He was gonna drop that.
It could be dangerous up there.
It could.
Dangerous up there.
Especially after some decision we made tonight.
Oh, it's, 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 uh, they're coming right to the center. We moved. We did the next, I don't, regarding, we hire the relatives, and we can add a section like that, last week, we recall, we altered that. Um, and this will change in the personnel policy, they mirror state law, just to me. Which is what, honestly, we got to, we got to follow.
Yeah, it's a, well, one, it's a great thing to have, and it's mirroring what the ethics commissioner is saying, because it's one of the top ethics violations reported every year. So just, he doesn't say you can't, no matter what, just can't under some provisions, uh, the big thing is supervision. Uh, which is what that one states. Uh, they have a question here on controlled substances. Which I think is a coverage.
This, obviously, you want to. Definitely, I think, marijuana, just like, it's not, it's not, it's, yeah, I don't think, at least.
Yeah, it all, so, we got.
So, basically, we generally get awkward, we can now, or move to the example of, um. Wasn't it, was it like if you got a. Yeah, if we do a grocery shopping, you can hang a grocery in the car, or something to that, that was the example that, I mean, you know, the committee.
That was the beauty, and like.
Right, you, you, yeah. Premises, but if, but some of the, you know, you know, it would be very short.
Yeah, and I, I think. Policy, you wanna get in trouble with that, the way I read it. Uh.
Yeah. I thought it was, it was more, you know, I had.
We discussed it, yeah, a lot.
About, um. Like, you know, apparently, you, and we, some, and it's described, the bottom position, and. And Brian, you know, it was, it's still considered illegal. Substance, and so if you're leading that on the job, then it's still, it's still.
And to carve out an exception, you got safety forces, you don't want an exception for, you have people dealing heavy stuff, wild equipment. So you can still say, no.
Well, there are regulations, like in the.
Any else, you know, and stuff that's.
You, you can't take a antidepressant, black land.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And there's, we don't, pretty much, James, because nevertheless, it's very strict, you know, if you have history, kiddies guns, and, you know, everything, you can't fly plane. You know.
DRT, we have, the DRT regulations, we have to follow. I mean, even if they did, if it was marijuana, you would not be able to use it, because in any way, because it's still come to work.
Right.
Um, and operate it. There's not any of this DRT regulations on during the pre, secondary output.
So, I think we may give it such policy, because it's all.
Guys, like, well, I'm gonna play, you should have five, okay, but I think it was.
Stuff like, yeah, I see, I'm trying to remember the word, you know.
They're. So, so what we do in here is, well, what, what do the blasts, what do they ask?
I'm not sure, the national, I think it was basically, the recommendation came out, have, both by prescription, there didn't be, um. With, with whatever, they're using, and it kind of lacked with. That is, uh, that is, that is what, uh. Yeah, the best, the best achieving, regardless of you have a restriction or not, there is no change from the federal law. It's still, it's still, it's with the illegal substance, even if they're legalized, their creation. If there's still, uh, because the defense still sees it as a, it's a, it's a. That said, that's like, you know, these, these shops, they have. You know, money, although, like, if they're gambling, it's the game, and, yeah. There's, there's still that, I don't, so it stays, the rules are better, and this is. When you have medical marijuana, that, that. Now, there is recreation marijuana, I don't see how anything can be changed in this document. Would you import it? That all.
Was, was there some other medication that you question, or was it just? I don't know, or, yeah, I mean, it's how the, we already got safeguards in place, but you know, like.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you see it a lot, with the people with back surgery, and they have a heavy pain reliever, that's a, don't operate a vehicle.
Yeah.
But we put them out back on the road, and they're still doing it, because no one ever said anything, but it's because it could impair you, and if you have an accident, that, we're in serious liability, same thing. Medical marijuana, maybe prescribed it, but that's gonna impair everyone, you judge it on your job, and you can tell them.
I just gotta do, I think of this term, control cell, which is, but I think some control substances can be prescribed and legal and totaled above, we would. I think that was, I think, I think there's a control schedule. Our high. And I, for sure, I, or, that's schedule one, um, it's got a schedule one.
Yeah.
So schedule two through five. Yeah, so schedule two through five, those can. But schedule one has no medicinal, schedule one doesn't care.
Yeah.
The other different, differentiating aspect to it. It's dangerous, I don't know, so it can be prescribed, but not controlled. So I think I'm trying to find it here, the, when our clarification was, it wasn't that the terms would be. But it, it was more about if you're sending something prescribed by a doctor that is not controlled, but it's still prescribed, right? So here you can see, it's set up and it. Needs to be prescribed, but it will not be controlled cell. So it's something of a left degree that may not influence any, but it was that. It is as well taken, but you could have, you know. Out of all for an A D H. It, it is well taken, I'm just saying, I would see how we can change this, this rule. When the bed's. Even if it's legally, really, it might. This rule, pretty much standard across the board, which they, the way that Harvard.
Yeah.
We don't have very much of a difference in like. Regular medications, right, as far as.
No, it's something that if you get prescribed anything, something with a strong pain reliever, it's something that is going to impair your job, and it's about coming up and asking for a reasonable accommodation, like, if for the next two weeks I'm on this medicine. I'm going to get a desk job, I'm going to do something, is that something you guys can accommodate? Yes, no, I'm the guy who doesn't say anything, and then I go and keep working on my patrol car, and I go put it around a tree or something, and hurt someone. Because, you know, whatever, so.
It's that one part, it, it's just, it's a legal drug, which there's no disagreement, but then it's a, the control of. And that's what I think it is, where there are controls that are like, is it a pain medication, who does that serve? Would it be a prescription? You know, that, that, and then of course. Schedule ones, Roger, that, again, clear. Don't, no one's. But I think that the language here in the directory work, like it just says strict control of the department. And.
Man.
And so I won't waste, there, there are some controls that, you know, people aren't using, it's just. That you gotta script them to the doctor and stuff, and I think that might have been like. Figure, okay, why, it should say. You know, with doctor, no, or whatever, medication again.
This is really great, because there are people who date and go back agents for legitimate purposes. Who really function. Very well in our patients, you know, whether that's a desk job or a physician or, or Mr. Green here is. Attention to that, whatever. But for purposes of people who drive vehicles, and find ladders, um, that's law enforcement. But those might have to be very clear, because considering they got weapons, they could harm someone, you know, where somebody working a desk job, that's not good, because they're running back and. You, you know, that's a. That's great, you know, that might be okay.
Not gonna, it's just.
I just. So, so we can get some to spec, also, yes, and last one. Definitely, there's something about this other one, you know, take off, hey, like, and I'm sitting more. And I, I mean, it wouldn't that pretty much solve the problem, and then you had to, I mean, I don't. Professions. We all. Yeah, it's, it's what assess, it's what assess. Their vital, um, but if, when you fall under. Their law enforcement's purview of, to, to write stuff, then I mean, that's, they're the experts of the app.
Yeah.
That was where we could just leave it. All right. Real, realistically, I think anyone's, like, actually get fired for using, it's, using the example, you have third degree, you get a pain medication. And so, those can get fired over that, but the way they read. The literal interpretation will just say, no, controls up are hard enough. And that's where, oh gosh, if someone gets tested and they, and they comes up, you know, deserving cabin, and it's like, oh, what if I can answer your doctor, and that, all that sort of stuff. It's because the literal way it's written on paper, it says, no things from both.
Yeah, that's a little hard, actually. Um, there should be some verdicts when certain areas would allow them, case by case. You know, exceptions, you know, that may even depend on professional to. To evaluate that. I, I mean, I could see that, you know, that's. We presented, I was. Have you ever seen that? In fact, yeah.
Uh, not. No, but I was trying to think, it references that code, and I want, they just have a different definition, control substance. That we can refer to and just put in there, because it may not be all encompassing as you were thinking.
The, but I believe citizens have been seen being placed.
Yeah.
On that, but I don't know, not be like actually connected, it was different, but I think it includes our involved, that's. There's a problem, like, this happened, you know. There could be like, oh, you're tested, well, let me have my doctor. Wait, you know.
It had, it had an issue down there, it could be an issue. Uh, like Cody's, if you thought, that, if it don't run, Cody's a cop ass, and, you know, it's complicated, just try it. So this doesn't get you fired, it's a job, I don't know.
Right, yeah, look into the, before you tell explanation, if we got something more of a finer. Those subjects that may allow that. Better minded. Same for, for.
My suspicion is, is that it's written. That goes written as zero dollars. And that goes. Designed for, but about the gap should, should have. But I do think we need to have more electric, maybe around it. Say, why, and how you, how to approach it, I don't, I don't think we have that, which we recommended. Um, so for future iteration, maybe that is one of us. Then, but I don't think it's already the biggest, we might even give it a system now, but I think that is going to become important for the huge iteration of the policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Then you get a job.
Absolutely, like anybody's job, or, you know, be your job.
All right, moving forward. Uh. Uh, this, one on the top of the last page is, uh. The porkings ahead get the same benefits as reflected bargaining staff. Um.
When our, our leadership not least fire, and, uh, which. This is an innocent one. If that's, so, and that's part of that, but. I'm really concerned about having two cheaters in our business, I think that's quite fair, and so. If we're providing segments, it's.
Yeah, it's the two, two, then they'd also be changing, so then it's hard to, to maintain or something, as the contract changes, now they're going to keep them out in the contract, and you got, then. Essentially, the contract bargaining unit is bargaining for someone not in their unit. Which is kind of. That doesn't happen, I'm just saying all different things about her.
Is that when we bargain these contracts?
Change it.
Well, I mean, if we're bargaining, Harson and I bargain fire contracts, and he's going to be recipient of all the benefits. Bargain for the fire contract. Why, I mean, what's the purpose? He should just be part of the beginning, I mean, that wouldn't make sense.
Yeah, also, I think our evaluation job is. Periodic. Evaluation process that would put in place, they saw. So I think the department should be part of that. It's, and I'll probably go with that. Sure, but. But they should have, they should have the opportunity periodically to get directly to state, because they have a, have a performance. And that, I mean, they're. It's, it's not unusual in, in organizations to have your top leadership. Add to, to set up some of the benefits and the rank file employees because of their responsibilities. And have hours, whether it may be their work. And so, you know, that's where, you know, I found that we were extending this kind of, it's unusual, I haven't seen that before, but. The fact that they get it is not a big deal, because I've seen it in other places. Just being consistent, they're all for our, our, as that's, that's the only thing that, as far as administrator. Right now, we kind of have two classes with our debtors. They, they all have significant responsibilities. Their code blocks and law laws that, so, but maybe that's one where. We. Put it off until we get those job restrictions, and then that, I mean. We can have a recommendation to. If there are some information that's still a lot of fucking, that's. I think.
Go on. Well, so I think there, I don't like the verge of time into the C B A, I don't like that at all, for every reason that you mentioned, actually. But I do think there should be some consistency, so I would favor bringing that back a little later. We had a little bit of consistency for all leadership positions. But not tied to the C B A.
We put a review process in place for our pens as well, and all this. While we're in the review process, to certainly that, that's the thing. All my people are getting this, and I'm not getting there with, with what, I'm doing a fair job, so that's why. Security. I don't want to talk about this, that is the one that I presented that several years ago by motion. For definitely. That's why. It's going to make our new assistant change as well. As well as our. I should add for the police fire. Administration, so administrative, and also assuming those. So. And again, in, so in this time, um. Trying to make sure that our leadership is, is, uh, the word in certain ways, is very fair when we do that, but. I think Brian, it would be a good time to make us. Feel possible, we're too many employees, we're still requiring, hopefully, not. This. Okay, so we're on, chilling around. Check as far as processes. And this is, that's, uh, the doctor. Um, you know, city, we could do that in the last meeting, so, yeah. We've incorporated it in there.
Travel expenses, W G ten.
Yeah, that was, that was just a moment that I threw out there. I don't know.
Travels.
Travel expenses, the food. A lot of. I'm saying, a lot of.
This is the most recent.
A, a lot of the. A lot of the, uh, uh, according to the city's captains, actually, I stand, didn't, then you're moving over, and we're just a. Hurt, we're having on that. Um, you know, looking like they have boys that aren't just credit cards, not understanding, apply the law, that means. There are a lot of things to cover, giving credit cards, they have to bring receipts back, and for that, but. It is for someone that, you know, is simply going on, you know, a, a, a conference or what have you, and they walk in first. Well, it's made at the beginning, to say that it didn't happen. You're not for a full day, then you get too much breakfast, lunch, dinner, and. You don't have to individually reimburse them, so if they make a decision that, that they want to have cheese and crackers and coke, and try to save the differentials. And added, if you want to, whether they have to keep up with individually, but each employee's got, does not that. So that, that doesn't apply to us, we're very big payers, just the. So maybe that's something, you want to say.
Play the store, that's. Cause I think. I think we've got. For keeping and so forth.
It's easy to. A whole lot. Be the most than that, but just for review to do. You know, we determined it's sixty five dollars a day, you're going all day long. If they can have cheese and crackers, you can save money. Yeah, why?
I always need, I have receipts, I need receipts, so I can put it with my checks. And I'm putting out there. Um, that's why I think it, it's a little bit, getting receipts for everything. Because when I'm being audited, they look at my receipt. Like that. So I have a group, and I, you guys. We're on this trip, other than. Program, but.
We, I hopefully get just an authorization from, uh, ten or four departments, so and so on a conference, and they're authorized for one, two, three days of per diem, you just stand up for per diem. And you say, I paid them the days of per diem. I don't mean, that's. Yeah. What are you saying? Yeah, because I've seen, uh, there's a lot of people seem to have. Per diem, it's not going to be, it's just, see the check, copy the check, and it says per diem, and I can match it up that they were on a trip and everything. And that's. Um.
It was not two years ago, I don't know about, but.
Yes.
Would you see my voices, so, and, and yeah. Yeah, even with this time, but that's. It's on.
Yeah. That's.
That statement would not be sufficient, like, the statement of the department had, or.
That matter happens somewhere. I hope it's too many, what, the state releases.
I mean, I, well, even if they don't have these. They will. Go back to the, they're, they're, they have a receipt. And every, I mean, they may roll those, but we're good.
Yeah, I just have a, uh, the, the. C P L violation, they want to be secure, remember? It says a, does that mean that we've gone back to six hundred and fifty hours, seventy eight hundred hours? That we have currently. Yeah. You know, we. Maybe we brought it up, yeah. In my, so I say. And that's, 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 that's way to, to remember, forty, it was. We made it to the start of that map. I'll say, and then you pay I, and add, each year, they send.
It's, uh, it's at eight hundred.
Right, and this is ripped out at six hundred.
Yeah, that, 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 that. Yeah.
Okay.
That part. Your, your suggestion got adopted, not that part in the stat comment, that's good. Yeah, I'll, yeah, of forty, that's. Okay. Not in the way that why, but what they had suggested is, yeah, with, with the.
The payout. For the, what's the payout? Is that where? It's opposite, yeah, it, it. But. Um, what, what's, it, it's, it's, it's one half of. So if we did a certain, six hours, whatever you have remaining in the year, when you pass that, then you would get one half of that in the pay.
Of what you were able to through that year to those on their life.
Yeah, so, so our program will tell. Will tell. How many hours? That. When we plug in your sick time interval. It tells us if it will either accept it. Or like four, six two hours, whether acceptable, six two hours, or, or inject, how many hours you're over. There is a column in the. It's in a link report. That shows how many hours of better judgment. That you would be bought over.
So we're not.
So they want to penalize.
Yeah.
So these people can, whether he's going to get fined, oh.
Yeah, and I'm just. So it's, I mean, I'm, I'm just. I'm confused. Yeah, it's, 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 it's like. Time out longevity, and all people will be around a bunch every time. That's an opportunity to do that, because if you're a judicial, and you're simply able that period of time. You've been here, you know, be here for a long, and you're now, if that can make a deal, you would be able to get some reimbursement for that. So maybe it's very. That. So we're going to curate. Sick down abuse, so I don't know. Instead of.
But so, so was this actually adopted that? They went over eight hundred hours, at the end of a year. Um, like. At the end of this past year, at the end of twenty twenty, was that adopted?
I did not, yeah.
Yeah, so it was.
So it's definitely for me, and writing in the year.
Yeah. It's a.
But then we can then look at. So. That one thing. You know.
Sorry to take it back. Was made well, even that once.
Okay.
And, and I think the last bit would sort of already last, right?
Correct, the, the stop two, and the last one is a formal written policy for separation, which is great, I recommend, I don't think it should be in here, it's just a matter of some kind of internal department policy, I don't know, like. It was what we do, we know about people, we do an exit interviews, we can, and I think each department or do, it's kind of a separate administrative. Actually detail how you do that, sort of like you say, you should follow the policy, but it'd be kind of a. Um, something you can, uh, and we can edit as, or if it wasn't a honor or not, so. Yeah, that doesn't really get in, in here, you know, so.
Okay. You guys have anything else? Gentlemen. Anything else, anyone else?
Can revisit P T L.
Can revisit PTL.
Let's walk down that road.
Okay, very good. Any other business to come before the board? And public comment, all those folks out there wishing to comment.
Our slot server better motion.
I'm asking. Yeah. Do you need anyone else to listen?
Okay, thanks, yeah, good, especially, yeah. I'm going to look longer, it was more.